Diane.
Aye.
I don't know if Chris wanted me to go at that point?
He did.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna ask Chief Sylvia to come up and tell us some good news about a grant that Coasset was awarded recently.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, a few months back, we met and we discussed a possible SAFER grant through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and we applied for that grant. And we were notified a week and a half ago that we were awarded $313,000 for the grant over a three-year period. So, this will allow us to hire two additional people to bring the staffing level up to six per shift, which will allow us to run five most of the time and drop to four without incurring overtime costs, and hopefully do our three-year study of this and see how, what this means to us moving forward. So, it's something we were trying to get accomplished, and now with this grant funding, we'll be able to get it accomplished and do the study.
Congratulations.
Pretty much.
Congratulations.
So, is the study, was that, is that, is that the reason for the grant?
Um, yes.
To be able to understand the staffing line?
Well, we've been attempting, at one point, the fire department staffing was 24. And then in the mid-2000s, when money got tight, we started eliminating positions through attrition because we were worried about, you know, keeping everything afloat at that point, and overrides and everything else. So, we dropped as low as 20, and with Chris, Chris's help and working the budgets pretty hard, we managed to get back to 22. So, with this staffing, with this grant, we'll be able to get back to 24. And that'll allow us to do, you know, as I said, over that three-year period, we'll be able to take a real hard look at how does that affect the overall budget for personnel and overtime. That's the thought. Pretty excited about it. The performance period starts next February, so we have up till then to get the hiring done, and it runs for that three-year period, so through 2022.
Wow. Congratulations.
Very, very thrilled by it. So, any questions?
I gotta say, I noticed, Chief, that you seem particularly active in applying for these grants. This isn't the first time you've been before us, you know, with this kind of good news. I do wanna thank you and recognize the fact that you're very active in doing this, and it's really benefited the town, this, this act of I you keep on the grant opportunity. So, keep, keep doing that, and I think that's exactly what you should be doing, so thank you.
Yeah, being said, we're in the process. There's another, there's another fee for grant, there's another fee for grant application opening up soon, so we're gonna start chasing something else.
And if you can, enter anyone who's looking to.
We are trying. We're trying.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Paula, Lennarz, our town treasurer, is gonna come up and give us our, was it the fourth quarter investment report?
June 30th.
June 30th. Good evening.
Good morning. Paula Lennarz, town treasurer. And, um, so for this quarter, we ended up positively, positively for, for all our investments, which was nice. Our expendable trusts are up, you know, less than a quarter percent, great. They are down for the calendar year-to-date in the year, but are up 3% for three years. Permanent trusts are up about 0.4% for the quarter, they're down 3.5% for the calendar year-to-date, and down 0.2% for the year, and are up over 5% for the three years since the inception, which goes back to 2014. The OPEB funds are up almost 1% for the quarter and calendar year-to-date, they're up 69% for the year and 68% for three years, so that's a bit better. So, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, the, I mean, the, the results aren't particularly great, but, um, compared, given our constraints, which we talked about last time, I think we're doing, doing okay.
Um, Paula, forgive me, I'm just, I'm going for the quarterly piece here. The, the longer-term numbers generally have been fairly attractive.
Yeah.
Against, against the benchmarks.
Correct.
And, uh, here we go. I'm sorry.
And the OPEB is doing, doing a bit better too than some of the, the ones that are tied to the legal list.
Right. Where we, where we seem to be dragging, as it were, is in the shorter-term periods, but my, the real question is the discrepancy versus the underlying benchmark, which is, of course, the, the measurement you're gonna go up against.
Sure.
Period. I don't, I don't care what the S and P is doing, what's the appropriate benchmark. The variances are, in, in some cases, a bit concerning. Rockland, I'm looking at the expendable trust right now, Rockland Trust Bartholomew, and, and Rockland is a 150, 001 under the permanent trusts, all show that same trend.
Correct.
Have, have their representatives had a conversation with you with respect to what they see as causing that for this narrow band of time?
I did it more for, for the last, I didn't go into a lot of detail, I do have some. What I'm hearing from Rockland Trust particularly is that the, the bond, the, the bond side they're doing all right, it's the, um, the stock side. And a lot of that has to do with the, the legal list. It got a little bit better, they say, with the, the shift to the defensive stocks, all right, as you get into the whole trade war stuff that was going on. The healthcare and the utilities kinda helped it, um, maintain some, some growth, but the, the worst offenders there were the, the market sectors. The consumer discretionary technology and energy specifically, and if we look at the legal, what we have for those who are consumer discretionary, alls we have is McDonald's, that's our only choice on the legal list. Technology is hew the packet, it's our only option. And, uh, energy, there's none.
Do we have Philip Morris in there still?
Yes.
We have Philip Morris.
Can I, can I just ask a question, and I don't say this to Chris, or actually to the board as well? We've, we've written letters to our representatives for any number of things, large and small. This is kinda central, right? I, it, it, it's kind of, it's actually appalling to think, you know, that whereas a good chunk of our legislature ends up in their own wing in Concord, that they've somehow selected equity investments that make sense over the years. There, I, I would propose that we just very simply establish by way of letter to our representatives that a review of municipal investment options must be undertaken soonst. This legal list piece is bizarre.
Right, there, there was actually legislation, and last I heard, it was in effect, uh...
And that's, there's every reason to start banging the pots and pans again.
Especially after November. Yep.
And it's not only us, it's everybody else.
Yeah, it's not just, it's not just our.
It's the whole state into McDonald's, or every 350 towns, or position McDonald's, right? So, shall we be encouraging the citizens to go out and?
Well, we did talk about their option last time, if you remember. We, you can, some communities have gone through a special act type of process and gotten permission to go ahead and go off the legal list. I guess I was kinda hoping with this last legislation, they would kinda see the trend, maybe more people need to do it before they, they change the legislation, with that kind of thing is happening.
We might, we might wanna get his support, let's go.
Yeah, let's go.
Yeah, let's look into that.
Let's look into it. This is, this is not, because these are, these are reserves that are supposed to be working diligently, and if we're, if our advisors are restricted to a list that might have looked attractive 15 years ago, but doesn't even make a nod under technology, it...
And I think, I think you said it was more than 15 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
The legal list, legal list has been going on for, for quite some time, but to be honest, since I've looked at it, this is really the time that it's really been a big issue because you don't have the, the cycles.
Right.
A lot of times, sometimes it'll actually help you.
Right.
Like, um, so, and other times it, it really hurts you, but overall, this is the first time that it's starting to creep into the longer-term numbers.
Right.
Ultimately, what I'm looking at is that if you're, if you limit your advisor, or if your advisor is limited, okay?
Correct.
Within your, within what they can recommend to you, then in fact, your, your flexibility is also limited. Our is, you know, so that's...
You can't take, you, you, you save on some of the downswings if you're not in that sector, but you also lose on the upswings on the intent as well.
I'm not looking, I'm not looking for them to hit it out of the park for us, but when you see that the, the impact of that restriction is beginning to corrode their capability to maintain as long-term return.
And by the way, you could see, I'm sorry, if you look at the, the PRIX, which is where OPEB, they don't, they're not bound by those rules.
Right.
And you can see the difference in the returns.
No, they're, they're, they're not bounded by those rules, but at the same time, those are, they're, they're involved in areas that we will never be involved.
Right, right, that's, that's true, but even Bartholomew was doing better.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. They're, they're, that's, that's exactly the point.
One of the things...
They're closer to the benchmarks.
One second, Kevin. One of the things, when we talked last quarter, was that we were gonna try to have some meeting, you know, have this topic on the agenda to really talk about whether we wanna take some, make some changes, or write a letter, or take some legislative action, or whatever. So, let's, we'll just queue that up.
Yeah.
Kevin?
So, I see here on the list that, you know, we have Eltria Stark, who has 1.2 million in those shares, and in March of, March of 2017, it was selling for $76 a share, today it's $62 a share.
Yeah.
So, that's an example, and they call that a consumer staple, but you're obviously, and the same thing is true of Eltria, which is the parent company of, or another company that's associated with them, they've gone from 120 to 80. So, I mean, that's a declining, tobacco's a declining industry, it's a losing industry. I think we should be divesting our, our investments in it anyways, and it's all, against the whole trend of society, to be investing in tobacco stocks, but that's an example of we're stuck apparently, you know, dying along with a company that's not only dying, but kills other people as well.
So, let's queue up a, a general investment conversation.
And Steve Gieha is also on the list. Well, that's only because the State House supports their attendance.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Any more questions?
Okay, any questions in general about quarterly investment report?
So, what are we gonna do, are we gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna submit a letter to?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll reach out to both our state rooms, Senator, by getting, looking to getting a special act done, so that it's modeled on someone else's, that we can change our investment strategy.
And then we will have an agenda item discussion, where we can talk kind of amongst ourselves about...
Review the language, maybe?
Well, certainly before that gets...
Well, Paula and I will talk afterwards.
Further along.
Research some of the committees that have these, and we'll go ahead.
And what do they look like, and are we, are they, are they narrowing in on, we don't wanna be in this sector or that sector, and are we giving it over to our investment advisor?
First of all, I hope that we never get to the point where we actually think we can run this stuff.
We're picking stocks, right?
And I, I, the, the fact that, you know, I think our policies actually call for independent investment advice for funds. It's really a matter of taking the restrictions away from the investment advisor, not, you know, because ultimately, the, the investment advice has gotta be relevant to the client's needs. So, for instance, permanent trusts are different than, say, expendable trusts, right? The OPEB requirement, oh, no, OPEB, not the requirement, the OPEB investment strategy is by definition actually infinity in nature. Assuming that we're gonna be alive in 700 years. All right? So, from that perspective, that takes a completely different view of something that we expect to expend sometime over the next 10 years. That's what the investment advisor's role is, is to put together that, that mix of, of investments that will achieve the objective at the minimum amount of risk. If you're not doing that by giving them a list of stocks, which may or may not be appropriate and is certainly incomplete as representative of what's available today. The only point, the only final point I'd like to make to the board is, once again, when you get a chance, revisit the PRIX returns, especially their consistently long, long-term track record, from the perspective of, I noticed that the PEB chairman is in the, in the audience. As we look into what our options are for pension, all right, and compare those versus what we're receiving through Norfolk County, it's, it's dramatically different. And so, to the extent that there are options for our pension reserves, I think we really need to, to give that some thought. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paula, thank you very much.
All right.
We have a number of sort of small license permits, events agreements to discuss tonight, the first being Sailing Club boat storage license, which we discussed a few weeks ago. One of our concerns at the time was permission from, or at least making Light Keepers Trust group aware that this is something we were gonna consider, and we heard from Noel Collins, who is from the Sailing Club, that asked us this question, that he is delayed and can't be here tonight.
Yeah, but, but they have reported back that they did contact them and the Light Keepers were fine, and I did not independently confirm that, but I don't, I have every reason to expect that's true.
So, did Light Keepers put any kind of restriction on where they could put the boats?
No, just, as long as on the gra, it's, it's in the grass in the back, 'cause I don't, you know, it's rare, at least from, I have not heard them complaining about parking. It's, it's over the winter. They'll, they'll be gone when the big events come.
No, I get it, I just wanted to know if there were any restrictions put on it.
Yeah, they just, the restrictions that we put on, it's that little, it's a little square corner in the back, and it's six trailers, I think, was, was the name? And I, and I'll...
Six boats on trailers, and then very back, where nobody parks, in the park corner.
This is, this is a year-to-year decision, right? This is not something that...
So, if you authorize it tonight, it'll have to be gone by May, and then at that point, the board can go over the winter and talk about a, a longer-term policy.
Well, and I definitely think it's something, just in general, on the harbor, this is our par, this is town property, that probably begs a longer conversation about this kind of thing.
And there're gonna be changes and things that may affect how this works.
Exactly, and parking in general down there. So, we talked about this, we had the letter that was actually from February 2018 in our packets. Does anybody have any other questions? And is somebody willing to make a motion to appro, to approve the storage of sailing, six Sailing Club boats on the town property near the Light Keepers parking lot?
So moved.
Is there...
And just a question, is that for, for a year, we're only doing, we're only committing?
Till May.
Yeah, so we're not, it's a one-time commitment at this point.
A one-time agreement till May?
It's a, and it's a license, just.
Would be a license, okay. All right, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna postpone the discussion of the Cable Advisory Committee Special Counsel contract, that's something that we also discussed in a previous meeting, we're still waiting to get a little more information and clarity on that. Next is approval of lease for Champion Program, the Recreation Before and After School Program.
We're, I, I was waiting right before the meeting to get something finally back, we're going back and forth and back and forth, and I think we're trying to make this just a license. The program is, again, the program's embedded, it's used in a number of other communities, it's really, because they normally touch it with the schools, it's a, it's a little different, you know, they're effectively running a program, but they're using our space, and the space has to be licensed by the state because of the childcare, and the, the pre and post-school child, um, safety issues. So, we're trying to turn this into form of a license as opposed to a lease, and I've gone back and forth with council about this, so I don't have a final document yet, um, so...
So, we're not ready to do this?
So, so, I mean, I, I would not, I would not normally ask for provisional approval or something, um, if you'd rather, we can wait.
It's something we're gonna have to sign anyway.
Yeah, well, if it's a license, I can sign it with your authorization, if it's not, if it's not a lease. A lease is something we're, we're slow.
What's the license, I mean, can you just briefly say what the license is gonna say?
License would be, they have use of the facility, before and after school, which is the upstairs, and then use of the bathrooms, and then whatever they need downstairs, if they need, and a place to store their equipment, they're gonna bring in equipment, you know, games and other stuff. Before and after school between October 22nd and the last day of school, which could be anywhere from, you know, mid to late June, depending on weather, and that's it, and then it ends, and then we'll look at another contract.
So, it's like a one-page document, basically?
Yeah, it, it's basically two pages, 'cause it talks about, and there's an addendum that talks about the time it gets so much of a percentage here, there's a fee structure and all that, which has already been worked out with the schools and the rec department. It's really just authorizing the program to happen, so, but again, I'm, I'm sorry, it's been so, it's been, I, sometimes you put laws in a room, it gets a little impacted, but...
So, I would, I would prefer not to approve it tonight without just actually looking at the paperwork that says, because it's, it's town property, it's a new program, you know, we, we trust that it's a good, well-vetted program, 'cause I know the rec commission's been involved, the schools have been involved, and you've been involved, but I would prefer to wait on that till October 9th, if that's not too, if that, if that's gonna blow up a deal, that's a different story.
No, no, it's gonna blow up a deal, I, I think, I think the schools are just getting very stressed about how long they're gonna get to get it up right there into a program.
But the plan is to move over on October 22nd?
Well, the problem is that this, they can't, there's a lead-in, there's the state, it's gonna be a four to six-week, they can't go through the planning process until an agreement is signed, and it's four to six weeks for that, the state won't do anything until the agreement's signed.
So, the, the, the agreement itself is in draft form, but that's it?
Yes.
Does the school have anything to do with expedition of that?
No, it's, it's all just between the town, because they've, they've, they're just running this interim program, and the rest is all on us, so we're just trying to scramble, we've never done this before either, so we're trying to get...
Right. So, we want, a third party in, in our buildings, looking after kids, I would argue that we wanna get that right.
No, 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 I completely agree, I understand that.
But the reason it's coming to us now is because it's a piece of real estate.
Yeah.
Not because it's a legal contract.
Right, 'cause it's, 'cause they, they have to have some control over it.
I'm just trying to sort it out, I mean, I think we all agree that it's okay use, right? Do we really care, I mean, we do care about the details, but, you know, I think we allow Chris some discretion here, right? I don't think it's a...
Well, let me just, let me just drill down one more time. So, there's the agreement...
Correct.
To have this company come in and perform their programs.
Right.
Is that separate or part of...
No, 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 so, so the agreement, it's the form of the agreement that we're, we're, we're going back and forth about it.
Okay.
We're trying not to have it as a lease, but rather to have it as a license, because of the, because of the, the potential legal implications of, of a lease.
So, this isn't a one-page thing that says you can use our building?
No, no, it, it, it really is just, it, the whole agreement is really a page and a half with an addendum, and it's just, the...
I'm just trying to understand whether there's an agreement that is for the program and everything, and a lease?
Yeah, yeah, but, but it's both. No, 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 it's one, it's one document.
Okay, all right, that's it.
And it's just a matter of form, that's really what we're demanding now, is, is the, the terminology in it, license, lease.
So, so by us not taking action tonight, we would be kinda delaying this getting executed to the extent that we can move this program expeditiously?
What action would we take?
We can, we could provisionally allow for the use of the building for this program from October 22nd, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
And what protections do we have by provisionally allowing that?
No, we're not trying to protect anything.
No, you're authorized, you need to sign only after it's all been vetted with council, and we're all good to go.
You give them the authorization.
I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm not telling you.
I'm, I'm not sure, you're, you're asking for authorization to complete the...
To complete the agreement.
Yeah.
Get it signed. And get, and get it signed, and then I'll, I'll bring it back to the board for, just so you can all see it afterwards. Or we just wait till the 9th, when it's all done, and then you just vet it and vote it, which is fine, we'll make it work as, either way.
For use of the building, which effectively is rental, isn't that something in which the selectmen have to say?
Well, if it's a lease, yes. Remember, so rec does this all, so, we run programs all the time in our building, and it's a contract vendor, it normally doesn't matter, right? 'Cause they're just coming in, you're running a yoga program, whatever the case may be, there's a state licensing aspect to this.
Yeah.
Which is why it's a little more complicated. So, it has to be defined a little bit more, if, if yoga goes upstairs or downstairs, it doesn't really matter.
Right.
In this case, the space is, has to be much more clearly defined for that period of time, so the state can license us and approve it in the bathrooms and all, that, that's what's making it more complicated, is the state licensing aspect. It's not the program, it's a licensing that accompanies the program, from the state level.
This far more delineation and restriction.
Yeah, that's what's making it a little more complicated, so, again, if, I, I will, I will, we will work the schools to make sure that the program continues on an interim basis until we get this all resolved. And this is something that I agree, we need to have the i's dotted and the t's crossed properly to make sure this is all good.
Well, okay, so ultimately, connect to the same question. Give, do we conditionally, not conditionally, do we, do we authorize, Chris, to complete the agreement?
Right.
What, subject to a vote of the board?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, but it...
That doesn't help him, though.
No?
'Cause he needs to sign it and get it to the, to the vendor, right?
I see, okay.
You have to, you have to have the ability to sign this thing and move on, or we wait to the end, which is, just, I'm okay with letting him do it, I, I don't see...
Carl's gonna look at it and sign it, not immediately, it's a license.
I mean, what's the risk to, to the town? I, you know, I don't see this as a big risk, we've already agreed that we wanna do this.
Can I ask one thing? Just one thing?
Yeah.
I have, I have, Chris is capable of protecting the town's interest on this, to the extent that we need to, and wants to move that along, I get it. Can you, can you communicate to us the contents of the agreement prior to your signature?
Yes.
So that if questions arise, we can certainly address them.
You could do it like, if there was something else you approved that way, you know, it was, it was circulated with the board, if anyone had an objection, it stopped, and we held it to the next meeting. We could do something like that.
All right.
Do that.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
All right.
Kevin, Steve, you wanna craft that motion?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Since you care for asking questions, then...
Feeling articulate.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut. Hold on just a second. Moved that the board authorized the town manager, Chris Senior, to complete a use agreement, facilities use agreement. Is it our license or is it a agreement?
You feel it's just agreement, it's, it's fine.
Okay, facilities use agreement for the Champion Program to be run throughout the school year, the remainder of the school year, 2018-2019. This agreement will be subject to an executive summary review to be distributed to the board prior to signature.
All right, sorry. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have a film request from Paul Canny and Thursday Night Football on Fox. Paul, you wanna come on up?
Sure.
Come up, introduce yourself, just summarize what you're doing for, more for the home audience, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. My name's Paul Canny, I do Ten Black West Lane here in Coasset. I'm a freelance producer-director, and I do a lot of work with Fox Sports. Currently, I'm producing a number of what we call opening teasers for Thursday Night Football, one of them being the upcoming Colts-Patriots game on October 4th. I'm doing a number of scenes around New England that represent the New England side of things. Today, we shot in Indianapolis, representing the Indianapolis side of things.
Cornfields.
What's that? Yeah, cornfields, exactly.
Something else.
St. Elmo's in downtown Indianapolis. So, for, for New England, we have a lobster minute that we're gonna do Saturday morning here in Coasset, and we have a contractor at a construction site, Boston, we have a firefighter at Brockton, and hopefully a painter on the First Parish Church here in Coasset. I've spoken with First Parish Church, and I have approval from the property committee to do the shoot, it would be this Saturday, upcoming, and I have the request before you. It would probably be a two to four-hour window, okay? We would be on the Common, we have a small crew, probably no more than six to 10 people. I have a request that we be able to park, hopefully, in the town parking lot here, but But we won't have any big tractor trailers or anything like that. We'll have one sprinter van and a couple other regular vehicles. The only additional request I would have is that we have a scissor lift or a boom lift where a cameraman could go and shoot an actor on the ladder against the church. And then potentially, if it was okay, we'd wanna do one drone shot with a small consumer style drone. We'd probably arrive around ten thirty AM, hope to be out of there by one thirty PM.
Would the boom lift, would that be on the grassy area of the commons?
TBD, if it could, yes. I know we had a lot of rain today, but we're not supposed to have any by the end of the week.
That'd be my only concern, maybe it's, you know, unstable.
Are you kidding? That common's bulletproof.
Just for the record, I asked if he could do, he could paint the old town hall building.
I waste your time with the church.
I know.
You wanna paint? Multiply you the key.
Go right back and take a shot of the air conditioner.
So ideally, yes. Okay, but I, I don't, we would look to shoot on the side of the church that faces up to the common where the lightbulb is.
Yeah.
You should have the selectmen painting the, uh, that's a witch's.
I've already been through all of this, you can roll it out.
And we obviously chose it, chose it because it's a iconic northern common and I think would be instantly recognizable to the audience.
Can you, can you, no parking signs around the common on that day? That's the request I have.
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah. Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns?
This doesn't require a patrol or anything?
I, I don't think it'd help like any roads or anything like that.
And, and frankly, it would, I think it would cause more commotion than we need to. I mean, we're gonna deal with noise and traffic going by, but it's better to just, this guy has like three lines and then we're off. My only other addition to this is we are shooting, like I said, a lobsterman leaving from Coasette Harbor early Saturday morning. I was hoping that we could park down a park route. A couple of our vehicles, we could park up behind the lightkeeper with the rest of them if necessary. Is that something I should clear with?
Anybody know what the tides are?
High tide Saturday morning is at ten AM.
And what time do you think of shooting?
We would go, we would probably have a call time of seven AM.
I'm just thinking, you're probably gonna run into people taking boats out.
Right.
Around high water.
We could park, I mean, we would only need like two spots and we could park over by CM. And I could park the rest up at the light.
Yeah, we, we'll just inform the police.
Nobody's gonna be there.
Nobody comes, shows up till ten or eleven.
No, I don't think.
Okay. Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve the Thursday Night Football pregame teaser shoot on Thursday night?
Football on Fox, nine twenty-two to eleven, approximately ten AM. Nine twenty-one is an alternate date, approximately until one thirty PM.
Is there a second?
Someone, I'm sorry.
All those in favor? Oh, what question?
Chris, would you just alert the police department in the event that you get complaints about the parking?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Great, thanks Paul, good luck.
Go ahead.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I might just be walking by.
Yeah, I know, right?
Feel free.
Really quickly, the harbor, the yacht club has transitioned their Commodore. And for their bylaws, they need to replace the member representative to the harbor committee. So their vice Commodore is now their Commodore. They have a new vice Commodore who typically holds the spot for representation of the harbor committee. They reached out to me and asked if we would make that transition and approve Bet Baker, Elizabeth Baker of Nichols Road, to the harbor committee yacht club representative spot.
Someone did. You okay with that, Tim?
I'm delighted.
Okay.
She'd be very good.
She's, she's great. Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I did try to ask Ralph if he wanted to hang in there just as a, but he has enough on his plate in many aspects, so, okay. We have a number of committee presentations tonight, and first up is the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, so Rob and friends, if you wanna come up and please just introduce yourself for the record and we'll take it from there.
Sure. Rob Jeffers, eighteen Spring Street, here in Coasette. So thank you for taking time. We have a bunch of the committee members here as well. What I was gonna do is just two quick things. One is to give you an update around some of the things that we're doing and some of the things that are going on, followed by a quick presentation by Habitat for Humanity, which will make sense once I go through my update. First, you all have the document right here. So the committee mandate, you know, I think it's just helpful in terminology. There's really two things that we're looking at. One is what I call affordable housing with an A, and that's having to do with the whole forty B. So there's a bunch of rules, they're, they're down here, of what counts as affordable housing as per the state. And there, the whole concept is we need to have at least ten percent of housing stock as affordable in order to be, you know, free of forty B and not have developers be able to go and appeal to the state to come and develop. We also, in our, in our meetings and discussions, talk about housing that is affordable. So that could be things that are useful to the community, but may not necessarily fit into the, the actual definition of affordable housing. Make sense?
Yep.
So far. So in looking at affordable housing, where we stand, we, when the twenty twenty census comes along, we will almost certainly not be at ten percent. We currently have three hundred and eight units in the subsidized housing inventory. At the end of last year, we had three thousand two hundred and forty-nine year-round housing units. So we would, we're about, right now, at least seventeen short of being at ten percent. Now, some of the work that, one of the things that we did, worked closely with Peter and Chris, had to get a housing production plan funded. And I don't know if you wanna, guys wanted to mention that a little bit, or I'll go through mine and you can maybe get some. But essentially, MAPC will be doing a housing production plan. Towns do this in order to show that, yes, we are working towards getting to the ten percent. We feel that this will be beneficial because we're pretty sure that when the twenty twenty census comes along, we're gonna be about twenty to twenty-five people short. That, that plan will take, you know, approximately six to nine months to, to be done. But we, we do have some recommendations and we will work with the MAPC on what we think are probably the most expedient ways forward for the, in order to make sure that we do meet our plans. We kinda break it down into three areas that I have on.
Can I ask you a question? So if you're, if we're doing the housing production plan, we roll into two thousand twenty and we don't meet our target, does that give us some kind of room to breathe? How much time do we get on that?
Max is five years, but you do need to be showing that you're actually following that housing production plan. You can't just submit it to the state and do nothing.
Right, but you get a significant amount of time to get the plan.
Yeah, generally, it's like, as long as you're showing your progress, that, you know, that the, the state's not gonna override us.
When will we finish the, the plan?
It's, they're, they're estimating six to eight months from when they start, so if that's in October, you're looking in the April, May timeframe.
They have a plan. It's a five-year plan?
It's actually, I believe it goes out, you know, further to full ten years for the, I mean, it's mainly really focused on how are you going to get to, to the ten percent and what are you gonna do to, to sustain that?
Did we get funding for that? We got funding for that, right?
Yes, yeah. So we have, we got the funding for that. So I think that, that'll be, it'll also, they'll do some studies. I mean, we've done a lot of work already, but it's not something that we can submit to the state. So I think this will be very helpful, making sure we have something very official, and they'll also do a little bit more research. We've done, you know, you know, quite a bit of that. But they can, you know, pinpoint some other certain demographics and stuff.
It's also similar like to the harbor plan. Once we have that done, I believe that'll also get, open up opportunities for us to get funding for other things. It puts us into a different league, so that's another reason to do it.
So there are, yeah, there are a lot of grants that would, you know, expect you to say, one of the questions are, do you have a housing production plan? So now there's a little checkbox. You can say, yes, we do have a housing production plan.
Do you want Pete to speak now, or on the housing production plan?
Yeah, I have a question about the housing production plan.
Would you mind just coming up, maybe just giving any context that isn't here already?
Sure.
So I just, for some backup context, since, since I got here, I worked with the master plan. I applied with the town, talking to Chris and Rob, for district local technical assistance funds with MAPC, and those are funds that come through the state. So Coasette was awarded thirty thousand dollars of DLTA funds and, and to produce a, a state approvable, I would say, housing production plan. So the theory, the, the process would be to, to use a group that's, that Rob leads, the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, as a baseline group to kinda help produce a housing production plan and to work with MAPC and to take the housing chapter out of the master plan and build, use that, I would, I would say, as a foundation to, and take that data and really elevate it to the next level to create a plan that we can submit to the Affordable Housing Committee Development for approval. And so therefore, we would have a, a plan that's in place. They're, they're, I think they're good for five years. They look on past five years, but they'll, they'll be certified for five years. And it's one of the best practices that the governor and the administration are pushing on local cities and towns.
Great.
I think the, the three things that, that we looked at as a committee and we'll, we'll talk to the MAPC about this is you have that immediate shortfall, but we're estimating it's gonna be around twenty twenty-five. Really, the only way we feel that we can get that quickly is partnering with a developer. The, potentially, you have something with the stop and shop. If twenty-five percent of the housing units are affordable, all of them count towards our subsidized housing inventory and that would be a big chunk. For some reason, that didn't work out. Another possibility is you could look at Avalon, they have room to build more up there. If that's, you know, they, anything that they add, all of it goes into the subsidized housing stock, and that's where you would be able to get a, a quick chunk. Then moving forward, we need, we really have two different areas. One is developers and one are individuals. So for developers, I just think it's really important that we continue with the inclusionary zoning. As long as we have the inclusionary zoning and they build the units, we'll, we'll move up and if we're in compliance, we'll stay in compliance. If they decide that they don't wanna build the units and they wanna, you know, pay, we have come to you guys before, we need to get the, the trust set up so that they could pay the money into the trust and then we have to work on creating those, those units.
Is that building the units or making the payment optional for them? Can the builder choose to pay instead of?
That is my understanding is, yeah.
As an optional payment?
That's a payment of payment in lieu.
Yeah.
Or if, if that was the case, if the developer wanted to pay out of the, the affordable housing, they could make funds available to the town under the Affordable Housing Trust and or the Board of Selectmen, whatever it's set up at that time.
I think at this point, the trust needs trustees, you know, that would be something, doesn't need to happen tomorrow, but something that.
Right, that, that is something that I talked to Chris about too. We probably should discuss at another meeting, just what, what the actual status is of the trust. You know, are there trustees that are still assigned to that and where to go from there?
And then for like individual buildings, we're estimating ten to fifteen, ten to, tends to be our growth rate. That could be anything from, you know, somebody splitting a lot, vacation housing turning into year-round housing, so just to clarify, vacation housing does not count towards our housing stock. But if somebody all of a sudden says, nope, I'm living here all year long, that's now in the housing stock. So a ten to fifteen, ten percent means that you need about one to two housing units. I think that's where the Affordable Housing Committee can work to come up with ideas on what are those one to two projects that we wanna do each year. We think that's manageable. There are opportunities. One of the ones we were talking about tonight is the eight oh eight Jerusalem, so that would be with like town-owned land. But there's also a lot of nonprofits within the town, whether it's the library or the historical society, working with them and on the timing to convert those into affordable housing units. But we're not, we don't have to do them all at once. We can kind of, you know, space those out, you know, over the years and that would be part of our, our long-term plan.
That'd be part of that production plan, where you look at where things are that might roll into.
Right, they can't really, kind of leave out the, that.
The other piece, and a lot of this will come out from the, the demographics and the information that we get from MAPC, is the whole housing that's affordable. Things that we have been looking out at is partnering with veterans groups or with state money for veterans. And in those cases, there might be opportunities to do, you know, communal living housing, where it might make more sense and that might meet a need that we have. Communal living doesn't count towards the housing, doesn't, neither counts towards the housing stock or towards affordable housing, but it might be something as a town that, that we would wanna do. There could be other things like small, smaller units for people who wanna downsize would be something that we would look in. This is more of a longer-term, you know, type plan where it's not necessarily deed it, but it's meeting the need, you know, of the town. And so some of those recommendations would probably come, you know, we'd work with the MAPC to come up with those and those are much longer term.
Rob, those two aren't necessarily conflicting with one another, right?
Correct, no, correct, yeah. There's a couple, there'd be a couple of different options and that's where we start thinking beyond just meeting our ten percent goal. It's like, okay, what is, what does the town need? And, you know, we can go above and beyond.
Well, as an example, you, you, if, if we could find a way to work maybe with a private entity or figure out how to do it on their own, one of the biggest restrictions we might have is land under our current zoning laws. When you talk about consider zoning changes to allow people to downsize, they're really small in units, right?
Yeah, yeah, smaller houses and then things like that. You can put little groups in there.
Right, and, and, and at the same time, if we looked at that sort of development and looked at it on a restricted deed basis, then it does actually.
Yeah. Oh, yes, absolutely. And that's where you have to, the, the trade-offs, you know, it's, and decide, yeah, do we want that to be affordable or do we want them just to be, be smaller? But once you hit the ten percent, you kinda have that freedom to make that decision. You're not, you're not being pushed and that's where we're, we're trying to get at.
Okay.
So that's kinda the, the, the update that we have. We did wanna present to you, have Habitat speak to you briefly. So there is, one of the, the items, and we've mentioned this before, is eight oh eight Jerusalem Road is a town-owned piece of land. This is something where would be kind of that onesie-twosie type idea. We'd look to put a, a two-unit dwelling there and have it be affordable. So basically, what we're advocating is that the selectmen consider deeding that as affordable. And then we would, we're working to, we'd go through an RFP process for different groups to, you know, build on that land. You know, this is something that Habitat's done in, done in the past and they can speak to it as well. There's no guarantee that they get it, but, you know, the way these things are structured, normally, you know, it, it, there's not a ton of people fighting, you know, for it. And then they would have to go through the process of getting, then, you know, some funding. We'd look for some funding from CPC. We have spoken to them and they're open to the idea. And they'd have to get a comp permit, you know, in order to, to do it. So there'd be a lot of steps that need to happen. What we're, I mean, the first one of those steps would be for you all to decide, okay, is this something that we'd be willing to, you know, deed as, as affordable housing? And that, that would obviously be a few, but we would definitely advocate for that. What we wanted to do is.
Affordable, does that kinda affordable housing, does it have to go through the approval process through planning board and all that, or does it jump all that?
It, it, well, it depends on whether, if it fits with the zoning, then it's just a building permit.
Are you, you're correct.
The, the building should be a legitimate building permit and, and that, that site, which, you know, that old store, has, I, I don't know if it's had all of its pre-existing uses, but it's a lot of grandfathered rights for that particular site, that, that, so.
So it would need a comp permit. It would have to go in front of the zoning, where, where there is easements on that land and it's all currently zoned for commercial use. So we would be looking to change that to residential.
So would we be the deciding body of that? Doesn't go to town meeting after us?
Uh, because it was a tax title, because it was a tax title property.
We would just be the side.
It, well, you, you'd, you'd give direction on whether you do a thirty B process. You decide that, yes, there's something we wanna do and, and we could do an RFP, we could do an RFP and go through thirty B process. Pete's actually gone through this in Hanover, so, where they actually did something like this. But it would be the selectmen directing, that's how you want it to be.
So we get, but it doesn't go to town meeting?
Doesn't have to.
Doesn't.
Well, the zoning change would.
Well, if there was a zoning change, unless there was a.
If it's zone commercial and we need it to be zone residential, that would go to town meeting.
Does it, or is that a ZVA appeal?
If you go through forty B, comprehensive permit goes through the zoning board appeals and they're the overriding board for any zoning matter.
So we can take advantage of forty B as, or Habitat or whoever.
Correct, in that case, even, even though the town is over ten percent, the quote-unquote friendly forty B, the zoning board appeals can still grant a comprehensive permit to that project.
Fascinating.
So, so the, the, the reason why I asked my question was, I think those neighbors are going to be sensitive to how the building looks. And they're gonna be sensitive to the fact that it's, you know, forty B housing. So there's some political issues around this and, you know, if, if the selectmen own the land, they're gonna look to the selectmen for resolution, I think. So I'd like to have some control over how the building looks and what the design is. And I don't know if that's even possible under what's being proposed.
Well, you can introduce Habitat and they can talk to that, if you'd like, and how they want it.
I think the point of this conversation is to say yes, and everyone has to be moving in the same direction or it's not gonna work.
Yeah.
So then, this is, Rob and I talked about this, this is like, this could be a long process, but you gotta start the conversation somewhere. They're ready to jump in, so I hear they are.
So if you could just approve it today, that'd be awesome. We're ready.
The agenda is a.
Yeah. So why, why don't I introduce the, the individuals from Habitat? They can tell you a little bit of how it works, some of, they'll show you some of the, what things look like and what they've done. I mean, I would just reiterate, you know, I'm sure they'll reiterate as well, you know, you know, affordable housing isn't section eight housing. And it's like, you know, individuals, like a family of four, could make up to seventy-eight thousand dollars a year and be eligible for affordable housing. So it's like, and the, and the individuals that buy these houses have to get approved for a loan, have to, you know, so that, it's not that, it, it, it's, these people have, you know, they have jobs, you know, they're, they're, they have to be working, they have to have an income. And as you know, we have some, some Habitat houses currently in town and I think it's, those go pretty well. But, so it's Noreen Brown and.
Can I just say one more thing before you go? Taffey Naughton-Nagle's involved with this group, right? Is Taffey, Taffey involved? No, not at all. You know, I, there are just issues around. You know, I, there are just issues around Elm Street that I, I don't want to create in the future for the town. And the fact that, that, you know, Elm Street was built with state funds really restricts the way we maintain and change those buildings. And, you know, it just, as my personal preference is to use, you know, private funds where we have much more flexibility in designating how the, how the housing gets done and how it gets built. I think when you go to the state for these kind of monies, it really restricts how you get things done. And there are people in this town that need this housing. I mean, like, for example, the lobstermen. There are only two, I think there are roughly two lobstermen who live in town now and fish out of that harbor. Everybody else had to move out of town. And those folks, those kind of needs don't get addressed at all. And, you know, for me, that's a big issue. And, you know, I want to see an affordable housing plan that addresses those kind of issues.
We've also had policemen and fire.
Police and fire too.
They spoke to me about the fact that they can't afford to live in town, so.
Yep. So this could be a potential, you know, solution for them.
Policeman in the fireman's house.
Yeah, they could, for that, as well as as we look at other ones and twos.
Yep.
Yeah, you could, you could look at that, yes.
I just want to clarify, though, as, as Habitat comes up. If I remember correctly, Habitat is about ownership.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Which is a wholly different thing.
Yes, it is, right.
And so.
Yes, my questions are on that as well.
No, 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 no. Habitat builds it, they sell it.
That's what I mean, they sell it to these individuals. So the people living there are buying a house.
Yes, and those people pay taxes, which is a nice thing.
Yeah, okay, you want to introduce Habitat?
So Habitat, we have Martine, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Taylor, she's the executive director. And Norine Brown, who we've been working, you know, closely with. And I believe they have a little video for you.
So in your package, just so that you can take it from here, it's information about us. But because you mentioned M A P C and on the left-hand side, there's a housing report. If you have not seen it, it's, I serve on the Housing Committee at the South Shore Chamber. And it talks about affordable housing, but housing in general. And it addresses all of the issues that, that Rob talked about. So that is more for, for your benefit and about who we are and what we are. We are going to show a video that we think will answer most of your questions. Habitat wants to come into a community and meet the needs of the community. And we want to work with the community to decide what it is that you are looking for. Our goal is homeownership. Our idea is to take families who otherwise would not be able to purchase homes in the communities in which we present and give them that opportunity. And so they do pay taxes, they do pay their trash bills, the water bills. It's no different than if they go down and, and get a mortgage from Citibank or any of the banks in town. The only difference with us is that they're able to partner, that they have to give sweat equity hours in lieu of a down payment. But otherwise, there really isn't any difference. And then in terms of what we want to build, we adhere to all local zoning. Yes, if we come before you with a comprehensive permit, and while that will give us some leniencies in certain areas, the idea at the end of the day is what will the lot adhere to? What can we fit on the lot? What will be the best in terms of the neighborhood and what should be created? And so tonight, we're going to present to you a six-unit subdivision that we're currently building in Duxbury. And certainly, we finished a two-unit project back in Hanover. So certainly, there's questions for that. But I'll let you see this and then we can answer any questions.
Hope you don't get a message.
I can tell what happens in that video, but I'd like not to.
That technology stock you were talking about earlier?
Is it coming back yet?
Oh, it's because the battery was low. Two hours, I only get.
On that map, it looks like there are almost all of the South Shore communities are involved.
Correct, we serve, and this will say it in the video, but we serve thirty-five cities and towns from Boston down to Plymouth and out as far as Medway. People say that to me all the time, there's no shore in Medway. There isn't, but it still is in our, our service area. We've built fifty-eight homes to date and we are in pace. You'll hear in the video on pace to do the same fifty-eight homes in the next ten years, which what originally took us thirty years. Because right now, with the housing crisis, the way that it is on the South Shore, we can't, we're building one at a, one home at a time anymore. So we are looking for municipalities to identify pieces of property like Jerusalem Road, whether there be larger properties where we could do one, where we could do duplexes, and really see what fits within the neighborhood.
And are most of them single-family homes or are there duplexes?
Most of our properties are single-family. And part of it is that homeownership. A lot of families that are transitioning are coming out of situations like condos. The, the units in Duxbury, it is a condo association. We are going for approval in Hangum for two, which will be two single-family homes, but a homeowner association. And, and then we have condos in Quincy, condos here on Elm Street. But ideally, our model is single-family homes.
Any townhouses?
The ones in Duxbury that you will see. Quincy, we have nine units. It's three singles, two duplexes side-by-sides. The six in Duxbury are townhouses. In Duxbury alone, we're creating a cul-de-sac community of six homes that will transform the lives of over twenty family members. This project is set to be the flagship example for how cities and towns can leverage available land while fostering community and nature. Partnership with South Shore Habitat is often the perfect match for cities and towns on the South Shore looking to meet their affordable housing goals. That's on pace for another fifty-seven homes in a little over a decade. Everyone deserves a place to call home. We invite you to become a part of our success and story going forward. And so clearly, people have asked, are those houses that big? They are, but not really. They're twelve hundred square foot. They have no basements, you know, we don't finish the basements. They're two bedrooms. No finished basements, no finished. We do partner with towns. If you've met your ten percent, in the case of Hangum, they still believe that affordable housing is needed. And so they're continuing to partner. So obviously, if the R F P were to come out, that would be something that we would, that we would apply to and provide. But it gives you an understanding about what we're able to do. It could be single, it could be doubles. We try, the larger you get, you get to commercial development. Then you're talking to sprinklers and bigger, bigger zoning issues. We are a forty B developer. People like to, you know, people shy away from that. The idea is that you have a master plan that you're working on and that we want to help you do that. And we have no profit. So the, the difference between us or the friendly forty B is that we're going to build these, meet your needs. We don't make a profit, but we continue to increase the housing stock.
Where's that project in Duxbury?
That is on Temple Street. We just got our official street. It's actually Feinberg Bog Road, but it's on the Pembroke side. If you cross over, if you're coming from, say, Lincoln Street, if you're coming from the center of Duxbury going towards Pembroke, it's on the right-hand side just as you go over Route three.
Part of the former Camp Wing land.
And we'd be, you know, certainly, I would encourage you to reach out to other towns, Duxbury, Hangum, Hanover. Most what we're finding now is towns are calling us and saying, we want to look at our master plans. We want to look, as you're looking at larger developments like Stop, Chop and Avalon and things that might take longer time, the idea is don't, don't wait and do some of the, the properties, the ones, the twos, the threes, the fives. So you continue to meet your need as you're looking at larger developments.
And, and the land, so in, in case that Rob brought up, we, we own a parcel. Would the town's involvement literally be to just deed that land over to Habitat? Who would then build on it and then sell it off? Is that how it typically works?
That's a model, yes.
That's a model.
I, I think i- i- if, if this is something that more wants us to explore further, we will.
Look at options.
Pete's done a lot of work on this, I think, putting together some more information so you can understand the options.
Under current zoning, what are the maximum numbers, number of housing units that go, that can go on that lot?
On that lot?
Yeah.
I would have to look at the pre-existing, you know, I mean, I think there was two units above that commercial space, I believe.
Okay, so McKenna, McKenna proposed two units and a commercial space. Yeah, there was, there was a proposal, yeah, that, that didn't get approved.
Was it two?
It's, it's, it's a fairly tight space.
Yeah.
It might have been three. But I just, and looking at, looking at some of these designs, I, you know, I, I, it would appear that producing something that fits in the neighborhood and is tasteful is pretty straightforward and, and that developer would have the capability. So that's a good thing. And if you get creative with it, and again, I don't know what your restrictions are with respect to ADA compliance and the like, if you get creative with it, you can do garage under. And so one of the arguments, or one of the issues that's been brought forward by neighbors has been parking. With that space, if you can do contained parking, well, you know, that's off the table. Or certainly, contained parking to the point where you're limiting the numbers of cars in the, you know, that seek street parking. I believe the bus road goes right through there.
Which also fits into transit development and other issues that you're looking to try to bring to the center of town as well.
Probably a few places, right?
That you can get public access.
Public access.
And again, to answer your earlier question about design and, and things like that, one of the things that we, you know, you'll, from zoning, tell us what we can and can't do. And then there's the opportunity to discuss and what makes sense, what meets the character of the neighborhood and within reason for the affordability, how do we work with you to come up with a design? So any developer under the R F P process, you can stipulate what needs to happen. And then obviously, those discussions can happen later.
And you manage the construction? You use your own contractors and?
We do, in fact.
You bid the jobs?
Yep, so we have a construction supervisor who's here this evening, Jamie McDab, who's full-time on our staff. We have licensed site supervisors. And then we bring in the community to do the actual building. But things like heating and foundations and some of the structural work, that's all subbed out by us.
Steve, did you have a question?
I did, but I completely forgot what it was. I actually got interested in hearing how they, the process works.
We did, I'm sorry, we did reach out to, you know, the Boy Scouts and, you know, and it's like, see if people would be interested. We do believe there would be, you know, a lot of groups, you know, in churches and stuff that, you know, would normally come out. And that's what I think would be really nice. It's kind of in a location, as if you go to Hull, you can say, hey, we built that, you know. And it's, you know, definitely get the, the entire community involved. So we think that's a nice, really nice first project for, for affordable housing. There is a two-unit right across the street, so it is in the, it is similar to what, what's across the street from it. So it wouldn't be something new or strange to put two units there.
Across the street, I think that was another tax title house, on Jerusalem Road. I think it's one in, not at the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the previous building, as Pete was pointing out, was, I think, two units, which at one point were occupied, two units, two units, two units above.
Just one, one thing, Chris, just to think about is, is before we wrap this discussion up, it's just really what, what would be our next step in terms of the board having a discussion? You know, with respect to options, or are you looking for kind of a green light or an exploratory green light? Or, I mean, I don't think we're, we have information enough to.
Well, I, I think, I think, again, I'll let Rob speak for himself, but based on our conversation, I think it's really an exploratory green light. It's like, if you're interested, let's get some more information together so you can, we can start working down the path. Because there's a lot of work that will have to be done and, you know, creating, you know, just understanding what you could go there, getting some consensus as to what it might look like, you know, getting community support and, and then crafting an R F P and going out there.
But action would be required by the board.
Yeah, but prior to that, I think what we would need the board to do is say, this is something we want for affordable housing. By doing that, by no means are you giving that to Habitat. There's a whole process in which the R F P has to go through. But until that happens, we really can't, we can engage them, and they've been very good with their time. But, you know, we, we, we need that in order to start that whole R F P process. And you would, of course, have to approve the R F P before it went out and all those types of things. But the very first step would be to say, this is, you know, land that we are willing to deed as affordable.
Yep. Kevin?
Yeah, it does seem to me that what we could do, or maybe we should do, is, is, I'd like to give them the authorization to, for the town manager to go ahead and explore the options for developing, you know, eight oh eight Jerusalem Road as an affordable housing and, and to present us the results of those. But I'd like to probably, I think we should probably do that as a motion, and I will at some point. We can vote on it, at least I want to show them that, that, that support. And I think that's what they need anyways, so that we can at least pursue the options and exploration. So when the chair's ready, I would like to make a motion.
And did you have any comments?
No, I'm just going to say the same thing. Is the deed on, are there restrictions on the deed? Are there any restrictions on the zoning? What was there before and what would potentially could be the options? That's kind of the same path. I think it's a great location, and again, it has public transportation. It's, it's a town piece of property which is small, so I don't think we're going to put a public safety building there. We're not going to put a, you know, anything of concern there from the, from the town offices or building point of view. And I think it's a great option for the town.
Steve?
Norine, I think you mentioned that when it came up earlier, that one, one model would be deeding the property into the trust, right? If we're to consider this, could you review with Chris to be brought back to us, what other models might exist, right?
Yeah, there are others.
Yeah, and so let's just get the review of what those, what those might look like. The other question I have is really, it's, it's, surrounds the R F P. The, the idea that this would be a friendly forty B but goes to an R F P brings forward the question as to whether or not this becomes a thirty B structure. In other words, it'd become an open bid. And if it does, right, you're putting in a lot of work and another, another entity conceivably could come in and offer something better.
Well, it, it's.
So what protects their interest?
It's not about price in this case. You're looking for results, right? Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, if another organization came up with a better plan for affordable housing, I mean, I, I guess you could.
No, no, that's, I'm asking about the process, and that's why I, that's why I'm asking the question.
I think at this point, what we have been saying is that if you come to the decision that yes, you do want to move forward with this as an affordable housing project, then Habitat needs to decide, can we expend some engineering, some design work, things like that? At that point, where we would be applying like anybody else, that's the cost of doing business. What we can't do is go and expend those monies that we haven't raised at this point for engineering to come with a design and say, here, this is what we're going to build. And then have you say, okay, we are going to put the safety building, we just don't have that liberty. But ultimately, those can go into the cost of design. And I would assume that would be the same for any other development.
Right, you're not going to pull the lever until.
Correct, yeah.
And I think that's, my, my interests are what Steve was talking about, just, you know, what really does happen? What's the transactional pieces of this? You know, can, do we just get rid of the, you know, turn over the land? And, and what does that, what, what might that look like?
Before advancing to an R F P, we would have to be thinking about how we transact the real estate.
Exactly.
It might be, I mean, it is going to be without a boarding, or maybe we just have a, a session with the public, an open public meeting with the Housing Committee, where people can just talk through without the votes being taken necessarily as an educational one.
Yep.
I like, because this could take, you know, a good conversation could be a hell to have.
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly what.
Just as a follow-up question, who's responsible for the housing piece?
Just as a follow-up question, who's responsible for the housing piece of the master plan? Is there one person taking point on that section?
So there's a team, so either there's a team set up from the houses, from the master plan committee, taking each section.
So could we have, could we have, I, I'd like to get an update on that section of the master plan, just to see what people are thinking about.
I can email you the draft of the chapter.
But I'm, I'm, that'd be great, that's good. But I'd actually like to have folks come up and just talk about where they're at with this, you know.
They're getting very close to having a draft available.
Okay.
And there is somebody from affordable housing on the master plan, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a representative. Okay. So I want to keep us moving because we have a couple other people that have been waiting for a long meeting to...
I want to make a motion regarding this.
Yep, yes, yep.
I can make a motion that we authorize the town manager to explore the, explore the alternatives and opportunities for making eight oh eight Jerusalem Road affordable housing and to report back to us as soon as they've done that exploration.
Do we want to make it more specific to habit, to a Habitat for Humanity project?
I don't think we can because ultimately it'll be, it'll be in our RFP process. So I think the motion's good.
Hey, that's someone's scale.
We got to sign, Chris, thank you. But you can't. Nice, nice. Thank you.
Don't get if you don't ask.
I read Noreen's face.
A slave captain on the first bill.
Don't get if you don't ask.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, good luck, thank you very much. Rob, before, before you all leave, would you just introduce the committee members that are in the audience, if you don't mind?
Susan?
Sardina.
Sardina, I should know everybody's name. Beth Tarpey, Peter Hopsin, is that it?
That it?
My wife, Leanne.
Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you, folks, thank you.
Thank you for supporting us. Alternative Energy Committee. Noreen, is that you?
Steve's here, yeah.
Steve's here as well? Where is he hiding? There he is.
That was a lot of people looking at him.
Now, I pride myself on running efficient meetings. We're an hour behind, so I do apologize.
Caught up on work.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you this.
Caught up on work. Keep it quick.
Hi.
Hi.
Introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Marie Karissa McDonald.
Steve Girardi.
Hey, board, give us an update.
Okay, so, so two topics on our committee is the streetlights. That's been ongoing for a while and right now we're in the process of working with MAPC, which is an area planning council, to solicit bids for streetlights. I'm trying to keep it as low as possible. They've come up with a kind of, you know, budgetary, but I took away some administrative fees since I'm very familiar with roadway lighting. And so they've worked out the prices, getting the final prices in and with labor, hopefully by the 25th, I'll have it and I'm going to provide it to Chris, so.
So this is, with this money, or this bid, whatever, for the streetlights, this is, we have money from a grant.
Yeah, so the Alternative Energy Commission, Committee has voted to recommend the select and support funding LED streetlight conversion at special town meeting. And let me explain, so there's been a lot of discussion about it. There's a grant that we, we have a piece of that expires at the end of the year. There's also some efficiency credits we get as part of this from National Grid, depending on the lighting score and all that. And then the town is, the last piece is the town's share, and that's what, that's where they're, they're massaging their numbers. The example streetlights, I've been actually sitting on Depot Court now for months.
Yeah.
So nobody's particularly reactive one way or the other, to my knowledge, at least. And the potential, there are...
So they're already installed, they're over at Depot Court?
There's two, there's two on Depot Court.
One, two.
Three, I'm sorry, the street and Depot Court. And yeah, again, Steve can take out a tour if he wants.
Right, there's three LED sample lights, if you will, with different colors, different shells, they say, in the theater.
The champagne and the...
So front of, so front of the post office was the champagne and the two white ones were near a path by a shop and one across the street. We had a couple residents that came up and they all enjoyed the tour and, especially one of the gentlemen with the kids, they had a house right near the post office.
Yeah.
Enjoyed the champagne colored light. They're still lower colored temperature light.
Okay.
How big is this contract potentially going to be?
Five hundred and eleven lights.
Four eighty-eight.
I'm sorry, it's four hundred and eighty-eight lights.
And, and cost-wise?
It's hard to tell now because, because we, it was like, you know, just a budgetary number, I think we were able to shrink that number of the...
So to ballpark, we're, we're in the zone of a hundred thousand dollars of potential town contribution or less, that's what we're talking about.
Hundred thousand dollars of town contribution.
Or less.
Plus, or less, plus the money that's a grant, plus the...
The goal is to get it as less than that as possible.
So I just want to raise my hand and say, "Make sure you go to capital budget because there are people on capital budget that know this technology well and if you don't do it, you're going to trip up."
No, absolutely. The question is whether or not the board wants to, say, explore it. Because, so there are, one of the challenges that we're going to face is that there are still three hundred lights in town that are not...
That's what I was just going to ask, four eighty-eight, what does that get us for coverage?
That gets us all the town lights, the street that town controls. And I could show you a map, not tonight, but what that means.
Well, it, it's useful to know what that means. There's nearly as many lights that are not town, where are they, who do they belong to?
So they're, they're mostly on private waves.
Okay.
There's also some, like on Cedar, for example, where the golf course maintains a few of their own.
Okay.
You know, around the curve where the platform tennis is.
Who pays those electric bills?
It's a private, they're private paid. Some, there's some cases homeowners said, "I want a light on my street, I want to pay for it." You know, there's, there's an argument to be, to be made that after we do this conversion, we save this money, maybe the town starts to incorporate some of those lights into the town's, you know, the town's portfolio over time. I drive home on South Main every night and it's, and when it's dark, it's dark, you throw your high beams on because you can't, you don't want to...
So the, so the recommendation, it sounds like, is it would be an article to go to special town meeting, which therefore would go to capital budget and advisory and us, right?
Just a very quick question, Steve, you're familiar with this. Shift over to, shift over to LED, what, I mean, if, if we were paying the full freight, what would be the payoff ratio in time?
In time, well, I know with this grant, if we use the numbers right now, it's only a two-year payback.
But that's with grant money?
That's with the grant money.
Eliminate the grant money.
So if I'm in grant money, you probably at least eight, nine years payback.
In terms of energy savings.
Energy savings and grants, no grants.
Right, right, right. I'm, I'm asking the question so that we all recognize that if we were footing the bill, would it be a wise decision? Now, the reason that eight years is important is because you're turning around and say, "Well, okay, so how long's the, how long does that lighting element last? How, how long is it expected to last?"
Expected years is twenty years, yeah, according to the functionality.
Pretty wise investment. Okay, so when you now shrink that down and say, "Well, our piece of the pie is nominal and you're actually with two-year payoff," I don't see where the question is.
And they also come with a ten-year warranty too, so you get to enjoy...
Minimum, there's that.
So you get a full flit of, a nice boundary of, you know, payback and warranty.
Okay. So I've been told that the, the savings isn't really in the electrical load, it's in the, it's in the technology because it lasts longer, is that true?
No, it's in the, it's in the electrical load. Because if you, law of the lights around here are seventy, I've converted to twenty-five, so you could take, you just cut it in half. So your amperage drops lower and your consumption, kilowatt hours drop. You multiply that over four hundred and eighty-eight lights, so that's a large savings in energy.
But that's without a drop in luminosity, same brightness?
Yeah, it's same brightness, you know, the lumens will be in and around the same what they are now and their color will be close to...
And you get an extension in the life of the bulb, right?
Yeah, it could, the average of twenty years.
Okay.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, so, talking about the turnaround time, what's the payoff?
The payoff.
For our house, we had National Grid come in and said, "Do it to LED from a, from residential point of view, six years and you'll drop your costs immediately." I mean, it's, it's about one-tenth to maybe, you know, twenty percent maximum cost for an LED versus an incandescent. Now, you lose the ability to heat, so you, an incandescent bulb is going to heat as well as a light, so you will pay a little more in heating, but it's six years for a residential home of my size, you know, twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, I converted my whole home to LED.
Really?
I saw my whole house drop the first month because of the kids, lights on, lights off.
It's pretty impressive.
I went from two hundred dollars to about a hundred bucks.
Wow. Kevin, do you have any questions?
Nope.
I have one, one more, and just this has nothing to do with the LEDs, I don't think. But I do notice that the, the streetlights are not consistently on, to your point. What up? They can, they can shut down seemingly at random and then light up seemingly at random.
Well, if they cycle like that, it means they're in the, end of their life. So if you see a cycling streetlight, it means they're, the faster the cycle goes, the closer it is to the accident.
So there's two failure points, photo eye, controls and bulb. So those are your three cycle components of failure, especially in high-pressure sodium bulbs.
So when I'm walking my dogs at night...
In the dark.
Well, no, actually in the light and then suddenly the lights go out. Is that an intentional event or is it a life span?
That's, that's, it's actually cycling, it's, it's on its way out.
Thank you, okay.
I didn't know that either until fairly recently.
So the intent is that they should be, after dark, they're on.
Yep.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm looking for.
I just, before I dismiss you, thank you, and I also want to point out that Steve is the, what are you, the electrical engineer for the Hingham Municipal Light Plant?
Engineering manager.
Engineering manager, so he knows of what he speaks.
So the last thing on the topic was myself, Chris and Chief, we've been working solutions with National Grid and Chief and I took a ride two weeks ago. I know, now I know how the system is laid out, we had some ideas and we brought it back to Chris.
Pulling Kevin because he's our National Grid connection.
We're going to set up a time to, for the two of us to get educated like they now are.
Okay, let me do that.
Steve, the only court request we have of you officially is that you get a really big extension court. And bring it down here.
Bring it to, can you bring it to your office and hang them?
I'm only a little bull shy from, you know, making them light.
Shit, giving away your secrets.
But overall, I had some ideas and obviously I translated back to Chris and Chief and I were discussing.
You're going to be writing a report when you translate that? Are you going to write?
Yeah, I put some together already, just to kind of...
Could you make sure I'm capping on it?
Yeah, 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 so one of the things that Steve's been doing is, is giving us technical questions from the National Grid. It's like, so, you know, we, as laymen, we wouldn't be able to look at the polls and know what the issues were, I mean, without, you know, getting to the great depth. It's one of the things that Steve and the chief were uncovering is that we have two different voltage feeds into town, which is one of the reasons that we had, is that you can't, one of the things we'd like to see happen is that if one part of the town fails, for whatever reason, one of the feeds, you can just flip to the other one. You may have to do that manual, like throwing the switches in the street, but now that can't happen because the voltages are incompatible.
So there's one that comes from Brockton and there's one that comes from the north?
So this is the way the town's like, so King Street, the line comes through that right away and it picks up a transformer, which is a low voltage, which heads towards Hingham to Hingham Loma. You have another line that's in a basic configuration, it picks up Avalon, it goes up Forest, it goes around to Town Hall. There's another line from Cituit that goes to South Main, it stops in front of, I know Hingham, but it glazes at a bakery shop.
French memories?
Stops right there.
Jeez.
Yep, there's another line from Cituit at the, at the border, there's a protected device that goes past CBS and picks up Pond Street and stops just in front of Stover Chops, it's an open source, so it's actually four feeds. So they look like these as backups. I don't work the system, I don't know.
But they all have different voltage?
So there's two of the same, two of, so there's two different volts, thirteen eight and it's forty-one sixty.
But you could put transformers in, right, if you wanted to?
Yeah, they get into wire capacity.
Yeah.
We have an old grid, I think that's really what we're going to have.
Yeah. Where's the Cituit electric come from, do you know?
It comes from Mont Blue. They have a, they have a one fifteen line that goes into their town.
From Mont Blue, huh?
One fifteen? Is that the same thing as the seven?
One fifteen thousand volts. They have a real substation.
Wow.
So that, but that's, that's a National Grid resource?
Yeah.
And that's where those big transmission lines are coming from, right? The ones, yeah.
Yeah, the ones you see over at Houndland.
Never thought it had power in Z.
All right, anyway, I'm going to move us along. Thank you very much, Marie. Thanks for hanging in there on this committee. You guys have done such great work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Mr. Davis, you have the floor.
Oh, great.
Welcome, thanks for hanging in there.
So which would you like first?
We have you as harbor committee.
Harbor committee, okay. The harbor committee, as you realize, is really a harbor study committee. We are, our primary objective is to work with our consultant Harriman to complete a harbor study, which will lead to a harbor plan. And once that harbor plan is developed, then the whole harbor committee organization and structure will change as we go into implementation phase. The objectives of the study and the plan, you all know, there are ten of them. The primary one or the first one on the top of the list is to support the commercial fishing fleet and it goes on down, I won't list them all, you all have copies of that. What we found, however, is as we have moved through this process of developing the harbor study leading to a plan, there are a number of other moving parts that, that really work with and around the objectives of the harbor committee. Some of them are the Parker Avenue ramp renovation. That we have, we have moved along, we've had a number of, of contractors come and look at the site visit, they've submitted proposals, we've got questions, and there is money that has been allocated for that, for the study, and that will move along in conjunction with the continuing harbor study. But that's one. The other big one, of course, is the potential harbor property development. You all know we've had one significant run at that. There are now several different groups that are looking at the development, particularly of Atlantica and the Cohasset Harbor Inn. But then there's also the, the Marina, which is, is another harbor property there that requires some, some development. What the harbor committee is trying to do is to work in coordination with any developer that comes in to make sure that there is a legitimate public-private partnership with the town and the private developers so that even though the harbor study and the harbor plan has not been completed, that anything that's done there essentially fits within the objectives of the, of the committee. So that is ongoing, really a separate coordinated effort along with the, with the harbor study. The other big one, and Chris has been involved with this along with Peter, is taking a look at the governance of the Cituit portion of Cohasset Harbor. There are a number of things that are going on there, that will go on there, that really would make it much easier if Cohasset had governance over that. The biggest one, of course, is the breakwater. The breakwater, as you may know now, with a, just a normal plus tide and a significant northeast wind, that breakwater does nothing to protect the harbor, and consequently, it means that Atlantica particularly, but other properties fall within the FEMA velocity zone. I was talking to Brian today, and the assumption, kind of back of the envelope, is that if we, if we fix that breakwater, it means that Atlantica would no longer be in a FEMA velocity zone, which to a developer is huge. So you can only imagine what that might mean. So these are moving parts that are going on, that we, as a Harbor Committee, would like to facilitate, because if we can facilitate it with doing things with the breakwater and help with the developer, that means a lot of things to the town, but it really is, again, part of this public-private partnership that we're trying to work on. Other things within the Cituit portion of Cohasset Harbor are things like public safety. Right now, almost by default, Cohasset is responsible for public safety along that, that part of it, but we'd like to make that more formal. There is a, a big public safety issue that the commercial fishermen are concerned about, and that's in the channel. As you go out the channel, you have the flats, we're on a low tide on a weekend, on a hot sun, it becomes dangerous. Private boats are backing into the channel, fishermen are coming along, they can't see what's going on, kids are swimming there, it really, somebody's gonna get run over. So that's another issue, and there are ways to deal with that, that we would like to help facilitate. So those are all things that are going on with the harbor, happy to answer any, any questions, we've got a Harbor Committee meeting tomorrow night, you're all welcome to come.
Do you want to go down the line, Steve?
Has there, has there been a, a conversation yet with Cituit?
Chris has had one conversation, or one or two.
There's been some preliminary conversations, we're gonna have something a little more formal October.
Is the, let me ask another question surrounding that. Do they recognize their liability?
I, I, I think there's a recognition of the challenges of, of the separation, I mean, I was talking with Jack, when I said earlier, the line is 400 years old, and when it was drawn, it was a frontier boundary between the Massachusetts Bay Colony and Plymouth. And, you know, even though that's been, the line's been there forever, that's been Cohasset Harbor for a couple hundred years, I mean, Cituit hasn't, to my knowledge, extended any real authority in it ever. And, and that was shipbuilding and all that other stuff, so now, you know, the breakwater technically sits at Cituit, I mean, it protects Cohasset Harbor, I, I can't imagine Cituit wants to spend a dollar to fix that, because it's not gonna have any impact on them. So I think there's practical reasons for conversations, I don't think the physical line will probably move, because it's sort of historic, that said, this operational, this industry, there's things we could do collaboratively, and we're having great collaborative conversations, sewers and anything, and water and other things anyway, so this is, you know, I had a very preliminary conversation, we talked, but I talked with the prior town, I haven't talked with the current one, and we're prepared to have more, and I, I, I expect to have some positive conversations.
Hi, Jack, anything?
One quick thing, have you spoken to Congressman Lynch's office, because they were extremely helpful with the dredging, when the dredging was a disaster.
That's, that's one of the, one of the objectives is dredging.
I've touched, visited their office a couple of times, they're, you know, he's pretty active with the shore communities as far as monies, development options, how to preserve the harbors, how to keep the commercial fishermen viable, so he's a very good source.
That's great, but I, I would like to, like to meet with him as we go forward, because dredging is, is obviously key. Without dredging, we wouldn't have a harbor.
And he was instrumental in forcing the Army Corps to kind of get it done, it's a little fishing.
And another story, yeah.
One of the, one of the reasons that we wanted to push forward with Parker Avenue is because the abutting neighbor who has that little marina there is planning to dredge that portion of the creek. If we do, some of the things we want to do with Parker Avenue require some dredging, and then once you're doing that dredging, then dredging down between there and the Sailing Club to do some other things, infrastructure work in the harbor, so that all this can be coordinated, that would, it'd be much more cost effective if we can do that.
Right.
So that's what we're trying to do.
Kevin?
I'm all set.
Okay, all right, you want to move on to OPEB?
Move on to OPEB, okay, I'll be brief with OPEB, but spoiler alert, the reason that many towns, cities, states, and in fact, the federal government, has not dealt with OPEB and simply kicked the can down the road, is because it is really, really difficult and complicated. As an example, right now, we have about a forty-one point something unfunded OPEB liability. If everything else remained exactly the same, employees, cost of insurance, everything else, and we were to say, okay, we want to fund that liability in thirty years, it would be an extra three and a half million dollars in our budget to do that. We are currently funding three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, I believe that's the number we're working with, and you can do the math, at three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's a hundred and twenty years to just fund our current liability, if that doesn't even increase. So one of the things we're doing is, number one, is understanding the current financial situation, and Don Pedd is, is working with us and doing a great job of finding actual information, other financial information to help us do it. What we want to do is really understand what the impact would be of any proposal we would have on the current annual budget. And there are a number of levers that we have that we will be proposing, but the fact of the matter is, we're all in this, whether it's the town employees or taxpayers of the town, it's gonna be painful, there's gonna be some pain, eventually. If we don't do anything, and this continues to go, we're gonna be looking at cutting services, increasing fees, increasing taxes, not hiring employees, these are things that are real, and that we've got to come to grips with. So we will be proposing various strategies for dealing with this, but don't for a moment think it's not gonna be painful, because it will be. We've gotten to forty-one million dollars by kicking the can down the road, and I, for one, think that we need to deal with this. So we'll be developing strategies for fully funding the OPEB liability, likely not in thirty years, but what we have to do is bend that curve, so that we're not digging a bigger hole than we already have. Even as importantly as the proposal for doing that is the communication with the town, and with the taxpayers, and the various constituents, particularly the employees, because they'll be a partner in this, one way or the other. So that's kind of the, the number of things that we're doing, kind of on a holistic basis. We expect to have numbers by the end of October about what we're really dealing with, we'll have another meeting then, we'll start to develop a strategy. Our hope is to have a full-blown strategy by town meeting, not that we'll present it to town meeting, but be able to present to you about that time. Anything that requires employees will be subject to negotiations, so that's probably gonna start in the spring, so there'll be issues there that we're gonna, we'll deal with as well. But that's kind of where we are, I don't mean to throw the Ron Apple legend, but that's where we are.
We all know it.
That's, Tim, that's, that's the benefit side of it, the healthcare side of it, right?
Yes, that's OPEB.
Right, with respect to pension?
We're about sixty-some-odd percent funded in pensions, and that's something we, we're looking at, we are gradually funding pensions, there's a plan that we're, and we're gonna look at what that is. At some point, fifteen years from now, pensions will be a hundred percent funded, according, that's kind of a rough, at that point, then that'll fall off, and that'll be money that could be used to fund OPEB.
Right.
Or anything else.
So, but that's, of course, again, going with the same caveat, assuming that we change nothing.
Nothing changes, right.
Right?
Assuming we change?
We change nothing.
Change what, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Nothing.
Oh, nothing?
In other words, we have the same number of employees.
Okay, well, yeah, and there are a lot of things we must change.
Okay, well, so the, the reason I'm asking this question is, well, there's, there's a couple of reasons, but one of them is that we, we tend to look at hirings as if they're a salaried number, and we don't tend to look at hirings on a fully loaded basis.
Well, loaded liability, yeah.
So one piece of the examination that we could use some education.
Is what does it cost?
What does it really cost? If you're hiring someone at seventy-five thousand dollars a year, what is the, what is the true annualized discounted present value cost?
And that is complicated, too.
I, I understand that, and it's.
Because it depends where that employee comes from, how long they stay with us, do they retire with us, or do they retire, so it is a.
Right, but there's, there, it's, on some level, we've got to be able to give ourselves some education as to what, what the impact is. It may not be an exact number, and it may not be a lasting number for that employee, but likewise, somewhere along the line, we may be picking someone up who's bringing it back to us.
Yeah.
The second piece is, what is the impact, what has been the impact of the management of our pension pool currently?
Well.
And, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but again, this is education the board needs.
No, I can tell you that I've seen the, the returns on the pension, and they're not pretty. I mean, I'm used to dealing with pensions, as you know, I, I chair the investment committee of the big hospital in Vermont, we've got one point two billion, we're managing three hundred fifty million as pension, our return is far better than that. Now, it's bigger, we can do different things, but I looked at the breakdown of equities versus fixed income.
No equities.
Very little, and then I heard today.
Are they subject to that same?
I heard today, the OPEB trust has specific securities that it's investing in?
Well, there's, no, no, there are, there are certain trusts, the OPEB trust is not limited by that, but they have certain trusts.
Okay, well, I mean, we shouldn't, we should not.
So the trusts are limited.
We, as a, with, the OPEB trust at two point something million dollars at the moment, we should not be investing in individual securities.
No, that's not governance anyway, no, no, no.
But anyways, the, the point is that I think there's input we can have there that would improve that, the return, both in the pension and from the OPEB trust.
Yeah, well, sure, and, and that's, I guess that's the point, is that our, our liability at the moment, and, you know, we're at sixty percent funded, we're contributing approximately, what, three million a year? Is that what you're?
Well.
I don't know if that's what we, no, it's gotta be more than that.
No, what I'm, what I'm driving at is.
Two point five.
No, what we're paying out?
Hold on, guys. Right, the, the, the summary of this is that based upon the calculations that you briefed us on just a few minutes ago, the, the assumption is that we'd be close to a hundred percent funded in fifteen years' time.
For, for the pension?
Yes, for the pension, just for the pension. And the reason that that's important is that fifteen-year number shrinks pretty aggressively with an increase in performance, and I'm not saying shoot the lights out, I'm just talking about moving from three and a half to four percent to five and a half to six percent. And that's the, so where I'm going with it is, along with understanding that financial impact, because as you point out, excess pension funding can then be redirected elsewhere, what are our options? What, I mean, you know, in, in the private world, you, you, you put up with poor performance only so long before you say, I'm gonna find another option.
Yeah.
And, and even in the public world, on a pension basis, if you're not, if you're, you know, your investment committee effectively is overseeing that, right, and you, you know, so my question is, what do we have for options?
Well, I'm not sure whether the pension is really part of our, our charge.
It is, we re-sated it.
Thank you. So we, we will, we, we had a small meeting today with Don and Katie Dugan, who's super, and we addressed the pension, we started to address the pension, we will, we'll, we'll look at that and offer that as part of our solution.
Okay, thanks. Much appreciated.
Any other questions?
Yeah, are you looking on the pension, the Norfolk County pension that we have there, are you looking at that at all, or?
Well, we're looking at it, we're looking at it, Kevin, I don't think we would, we'd be hard-pressed to recommend moving that, but I don't know until we look at it.
But you will be looking at it, seeing what fits in this whole picture here, and at least in your report there, we get in the end, there's some further understanding, because there's a lot of non-understanding of what that's all about, it would be helpful to both the board as well as the community to.
Sure.
Have you look into it, and just give some views on where we stand on it or whatever.
The state stepped in with the pension system a number of years ago and said, you all must follow these rules and get to a fully funded system at a certain point, and restructure yourself so you stay that way. That's what, that's what's happening, unfortunately Norfolk was a little bit worse than others. And, so in theory, it's, it's, well, I'm not suggesting it's, I'm not talking about the returns, the structure in theory now requires the pension to be managed at a, at or near full funding.
But there are other options besides Norfolk County?
Well, the state has the print, right, and which is, you know, which was set up to keep the state from going off the cliff, and that seems to be doing pretty well.
Yeah.
But there are dozens upon dozens upon dozens of plans across the state, they're all, they're all regulated, in theory, the same way, they'll have to get to fully funded, but, you know, Don came from Stone, for example, and, and they are much closer to being fully funded than Norfolk is, and, you know, and I was talking to my colleague in Norwood, they, they're in Norfolk County, but they have their own pension system, so does Hingham, I'm not suggesting it costs a great sum by any means, but.
No, I'm actually thinking about it as a, a separate, a, a separate custodian, right?
Yeah.
You know, look, we've been, we've been part of Norfolk for how long? I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we take it on on our own, but rather investigate whether or not we could lift out our, our.
Proportion.
Our proportion and bring it to print, as an example.
There's an election for treasurer this fall, I mean, for Norfolk County, who's the controller of the pension, and there are seats on this advisory board that nobody ever runs for, but perhaps, depending on how this all goes, maybe there should be some conversation at the beginning, whether from Glasgow or some other neighbor, some other partner community, get people on that oversight board that actually are more than just.
They're the only ones that have influence.
Well, on that, that particular pension, and that's one of the reasons that we should at least look at, understand, because we really don't, and that's always a bad sign, is our voting capability, our influence on that entire pension is about two or three percent. Well, we got two, so we really don't, and so that speaks to, we should be looking at what our, especially if we're tied our wagon to us, we don't know where it's going.
Very dim star.
What do they call it, Nova Star? Supernova, but anyways, it, it's a huge thing to be asking you to do, but it is.
We're the only South Shore outpost in Norfolk County, right?
Tim, thank you very much, this is very helpful.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Tim, thank you for doing this, Gary.
We're gonna keep up on these.
Who's next?
Committee. Next is to just, this is, the rest of the meeting's ours. So I sent out very late last night a, a draft, and I'm sorry, I didn't put it in draft, put a draft watermark on it, but I intended to, budget message. I don't want to go through parking language tonight, but depending on how you want to handle this, the board, there's two things about the budget message, one is basically, it's fairly similar to every other budget message we've done, I did incorporate some of the recommendations of the advisory committee. I didn't, which they gave, they presented to us at our meeting on September fourth, I didn't incorporate their specific recommendations on OPEB, only because I knew OPEB, I've been working on those very same, very specifics, and, you know, we're gonna make a presentation later in the spring, so, and as far as our operational budget goes, that's what this budget message is for. So I think what I'd like to ask the board, if it's okay, is just to look through it, look through it in the context of our goals and objectives that you're gonna be scoring over the next six or seven days, because there may be something that rises to the top by the time we meet again on October ninth, that is, becomes a board of selectment goal for the year, that we need to make sure is properly outlined in the budget message, if it's, if it's something that's gonna require some kind of budgetary action. So I, like I said, I think what I'll ask you to do is just to send any changes and updates, and then we will, we will have another draft with some suggested changes that we can really spend a little more time on discussing on October ninth, does that make sense? Okay, Kevin?
I was wondering, since, you know, the advisory committee did go through the trouble and gave us a thoughtful input, in the spirit both of getting their actual input, as well as in working well with our committees, and there was, seemed to strike me as irrespective of the content, they were doing really good advisory stuff right in the financial area that, what if we were to send this to, back to them, we've listened to them, send our, our message that we were thinking of, and just letting them know that we're gonna be making our final review on October ninth, but invite them to send us any brief, brief commentary, specific, if they want to get some, to give some input to us, and that way we're, you know, we're working with our committees, and we're, I don't know, what do you think, we haven't done that before, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, I think certainly any, I mean, this is public, public document, basically in draft form, it's, we're discussing it now, I think I can certainly give John a copy of it, and I, you missed the, the cue up for the budget message, which is I pretty much incorporated your general recommendations, with the exception of the specific recommendations on OPEB, specifically because the committee itself will be making those recommendations at the end of the year.
And as you heard, there's some different.
Exactly.
Decisions in the numbers.
And also among the, the OPEB committee members in discussions, but, but OPEB is a, and has been for the last four years, has been an integral part of this budget message, so that's in there, but I'll give you a copy of this, and, I mean, really, anybody that wants to make comments, it is our message, but I will, including the board member suggestions, I'll, we'll just list those all on a piece of paper that will go out with this draft, and we'll discuss and adopt on October ninth. Okay, anybody else? Anything right now?
I appreciate Kevin's comment, I just, as a matter of governance, I'd like to make sure that we recognize, we all recognize the bright line that exists.
Yep.
Advisory committee's first and foremost job is to advise town meeting, not to advise the board of selectment. We live and die by that. So there, advisory committee's input is valued, but there will be times when our opinions will differ.
Yep. Yep.
And we've gotta recognize that. And to that extent, to keep their role consistent with the, the way that it was structured, advising town meeting first, this is one of those cautionary areas.
Mm-hmm.
I do not wanna co-opt them, or have us co-opt their ideas.
Yep.
Because with that, they lose their independence and their ability to report the town meeting independently.
Yep.
Okay? So that's, that's all.
Right.
Okay, well, I'd like to discuss that, 'cause I think it's a very good point, and, but I wanna make sure actually that I'm clear on it, because I actually do think of the advisory committee as advising us. So I just wanna know, where are you getting your basis of that? Is it in the-
Bylaws.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at that again, because-
The advisory committee-
Only town meeting?
No, that's their first priority, is to advise town meeting. That's their function.
But, I mean, don't they advise us also?
They, they, they can advise us.
Per our-
They are not, they are not our committee.
No, 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 I understand, yeah, but I, all I'm saying, first of all, on the budget message, I, I feel no, I absolutely agree with you a hundred percent, budget is ours.
Right.
My posture here only is, is, and I, as, as a matter of governance, I tend to do it anyways, I like to reach out and listen to people, particularly a key committee like that, that's coming to us and has such, so, um-
This is not-
I'm gonna look at that, you say that's in the town chatter?
It's in the bylaws.
So-
It's in the bylaws?
I don't-
So, I, I don't, I don't think we need to resolve governance issues tonight, but I-
But I think it's an important discussion, because it speaks to who gets input into the budget message, and, you know, I, I think it's a-
So-
-comment that's well-taken.
My, my, and I'm not disagreeing with anybody on this, I'm just saying that I have drafted it based on the comments from advisory board, based on the structure of the budget message in years past. I am asking anybody that has comments, I mean, you know, somebody could be watching TV and pick up the phone and call me and say, "Hey, listen, I wanna see your budget message, does it include?" I mean, this is an open process, and what I will do is I will compile anybody's recommendations, I will note who, who is, they are attributed to, and we will discuss them as a board and decide whether we wanna-
Okay, I won't make too much of this, 'cause there is a fine area, but to me, it seems to me, I, I would just as soon go back to advisory, say, "Thank you for your input, here's what we got now," and say, ask them specifically, if you have time, you know, give us any input, instead of sort of throwing it as a general thing, but I think we're at a fine governance thing. I'm gonna do a little research myself, and I'm not interested in being argumentative about it. I'm also going to, if the board, this is public, I'm gonna ask citizens myself, I might post this and say, "Give me, give me any input, especially my own." 'Cause I'd like to have, I can have some ideas on this.
Advisories asked to opine on budgets, you know, Chris goes to advisory, shows them the budgets, advisory has direct input and comment on budget, you know, that's, you know, when I think about advisory, I think about the income statement for the town. That's, that's their primary focus, so-
Let me, let me make sure I can, I can settle this down. First of all, Kevin, I'm not, there's no argument with you.
Oh, no, we're just discussing-
My alarm bells go off when we, when, when we have folks whose role is to be objective and to advise town meeting, functionally acting in a, in a capacity that advocates for something, all right?
So what would be in the budget message that would, would-
Hold on, hold on.
Answer my question. What would be in the budget message that would compromise the advisory-
I'll answer your question when I finish my statement.
All right.
All right? That's, that was, that was, that was the reason for bringing it up, Kevin. That's, that's all. We, we got into it with town hall as an example. With respect to advisory offering their opinions on the budget, or offering their input on the budget to both town meeting, to the town manager, yes, that's part of their role, offering their opinions to us, absolutely. I, I've got no argument with that. I just wanna make sure it was clear that we are not trying to pull them into our positions such that they are, we're somehow pulling, veering them off course of being an objective body.
Right, that they're part of our, our message. I get it, it's a, it's a public document, please don't do anything with it until I am able to add a draft stamp to it, because I did not do that, I don't feel comfortable with this going out till I have a draft watermark on it.
So when, when will we get that?
I, I can do it tonight when I get home. And anybody that has any comments on it, but I am particularly asking the board, this is our message, if you have any comments, especially after you've reviewed the goals and objectives, to adopt, because we're gonna rank those, we're gonna come out with an aggregate score, and we might find out that, I don't know, that a public safety building's number one on our list, and that's not covered in this budget message. So this, too, is gonna take on a different form, depending on where our, where our goals are, and that is for discussion on October ninth, okay? I'm gonna move on, 'cause I think we're just getting to a point where, you know, I think we agree, this is, this is our message, if anybody wants input, they can certainly share it with us. So, draft a town man, town meeting.
The bylaws do say that suggestions and affirmations from the advisory committee to the board of selectmen.
So it does say, it does say to the board of selectmen.
And I don't, I don't want advisory to feel like we're doing anything other than, I mean, you've given us input, I incorporated it, it's here, I'll send it to you, and, and I will make notes on anybody that gives us comments.
Go ahead.
So first, this is, there are no citizen petitions, so, for some reason, I'm missing Article One.
We're missing pages here?
Yeah, Article One.
This is the thinnest, uh-
This was, it was self-assigned.
You see, Town will trace for a million dollars to Chris, senior's retirement.
I'm used to seeing twenty things.
Article Four.
Yeah, yeah. Chris, Chris needs a new doghouse.
I don't miss nothing.
And a year's supply of biscuits.
Let me skip, Tracy's kinda run some copies, apparently the copy machine was not behaving much. So, let me jump to my report real quick, and we'll come back, if that's okay. So, town hall, we got the building assessment back, it's, it's, it's-
Excuse me, we didn't want-
I waited for Tracy to make fresh copies.
Yeah, so you have to move on a ten-minute update.
Switching this for a second, because the copy machine ate half of them.
You didn't have to take them.
So, yeah, seven articles at the moment. That's, some may break and separate a little bit, depending on what the board's, some things won't sure about. So let me go to my report again. So, town hall, the building assessment, repair assessment has come back, it's being reviewed, and it's pretty meaty and thick, and it's a pretty large number attached.
Can we get a coffee?
Yes, I, 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 one of the things that Brian and his team are looking at now is kind of helping rank them, you know, I, I think it's actually a very useful document, so I'll circulate that shortly. We also got a painting estimate, just based on their request.
How much was that?
A hundred, a hundred thousand dollars for the old town hall roughly, plus another thirty to forty of repair work that they can't estimate till they actually go in. Placing clapboards and-
Right, I was gonna say, would that include some of the rot?
Yes, and then both buildings together is about one fifty plus.
Sprays of gunite on it.
And that's not, so, and again, the roof would need to be done before it needed that anyway, 'cause there's some issues with the roof, so.
How about gutters, does that address gutters?
Not the painting, no. So, the painting, it was just painting. The, the, so that's being pulled together again, so that, that assessment is just about repair, it's not about improvements, anything other than the basic systems, so, that was, it's, it's, I think it'll be very illuminating, so that's, we've gotten it, it's being reviewed, and we'll circulate it, and I think it'll help tee up a bigger conversation, but we want it direct us to go next. All right, all right, so.
So we got the even numbers.
Chris, did they, timeframe for, could they stage and go, could they say?
Even and odd numbers.
I, I, we talked about this prior in our first kind of capital budget meeting, so yeah, so, I'm not, all right, so I have some, I have some very good news. Cunningham Bridge will open traffic this Friday at five p.m.
Wow.
Wow.
Is that gonna be a ceremony? Uh, not today, this is a, this is a soft opening, it's like a Disney ride.
Can we just say, this Friday, September-
Number twenty-first. Now, just to be clear, though, this is, the project's not done, it's gonna be, there are gonna be periodic lane closures over the next two months, as they do some additional work, including a stretch that may last up to two weeks, where they have to just pull the final copper dam out, so that may require a full closure for some period of time while they put the crane, put it, pull it back out. So, but it is gonna open softly to traffic, when I say soft, I mean, there's not gonna be any grand ribbon cutting. That said, there is a ribbon cutting being planned, the, the state DOT is working on this, the governor's office has been contacted, Congressman Lynch's office has been contacted, they're looking at trying to pull something up for October, as we get more information, and we'll let all of you know, and that should be a very nice festive event.
So, so ten o'clock, so we can, I can ride my bike over?
Five p.m.
Five p.m., that's not Friday.
We're all there.
Five p.m. on Friday.
Just, just one comment, because I have had a few people ask me, there's a, and we mentioned it earlier in the meeting, when there's, there's the date two thousand and nineteen etched into the, the bridge, and that is because the job won't officially close out till everything's taken care of.
There will be on-site into the next year, there's wetland remediation, things that have to take place, so that the project will not be completed until then.
Yeah.
And by the way, you wouldn't wanna put a two thousand and eighteen date and have some storm to land, right? That's a-
I understand, but still, it's just kinda funny.
So, look, it's early, it's early delivered, right?
Yep, that's fabulous.
So that's very good news to pass along. And one, a quick thing that I, I just learned about, and I, and all of you have been invited to, and anyone else who wants to come, there's a ceremony remembering the victims of the brig St. John. That was an Irish famine ship that went aground off mine at light eighteen forty-nine, lost almost all the passengers, about a hundred lives. They were coming here, they had made it over the ocean, there was a big storm, and they wrecked on the rocks, and it's a terrible story. So, there's a ceremony taking place tomorrow at Central Cemetery, starting at one thirty. And the reason this is happening is, there's, the situat has a sister city program with West Cork, so they, they're, they've asked to do a ceremony, and again, it's not our cemetery, it's Central Cemetery's project anyway, but there's a big cross, a big Irish cross.
Celtic.
Celtic cross, I'm sorry, that, that marks the grave. Forty-six people were buried there, forty-six.
Where's the cemetery?
It's in Central, it's, it's right here on the water, it's the one right on the water. Oh, oh, yeah, right, drive place.
Drive place.
Yeah. So, the ceremony's at one thirty tomorrow, and there'll be a reading of all the names of the, the people who died, so I'll, I'll be taking part in that tomorrow, and I, I know that the invitation went out to all of you, if you could get it, and I know it's the middle of the day, and the middle of the weekday, so, but the situat, Sister City folks will be coming to take part in this tomorrow, so.
So Henry David Thoreau had a nice piece when he toured the results of the disaster of the brig, and it's, it's frightening of what he described when he walked along the beach.
So if you Google the brig St. John, you'll, it's a, it's a really sad story.
Especially since they admitted all the way to the trip.
Yeah.
They were in sight of probably, they probably headed to Boston, right?
No, 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 I think they were headed, I think they were headed down here, actually, to situat, I think, I think they were headed to situat, actually.
So they got here?
They got here, and, and, and the water, and the seas got rough, and they tried to anchor, and it got, they got washed onto the rocks, and the ship went aground, and literally the story is that, you know, that they couldn't do anything, people were drowning, and you couldn't get to them off the rocks. You could hear them, you know, it was probably a big hurricane. It was a big storm, I, I forget the season of the year that happened, but, but the ceremony is tomorrow, so.
That was probably this time of year, right?
I, I, I don't, I don't recall.
Probably, if they were coming from England, they would, they'd have started in the spring, summer, so, yeah.
So let's, let's try this again.
To the draft, yeah.
Okay. Article One will be amendments to the fiscal operating to the two thousand and nineteen operating budget, I don't have anything in here yet, 'cause Don is still wrapping up.
But you think there is gonna be-
There might be a couple of, with the union contracts and all, we just have to move money around, it was in one place into another, you know, it's not, I don't know that we're gonna have to supplement anything.
So there might be line item transfers opposed to-
Just moving among departments.
So it's fund transfers.
I, I think it's primarily what we're talking about.
September seventh, when it happened.
I don't, at this moment, there's no one pay bills, we, we, everything, everything that we knew was gonna delay was encumbered, so the money's already sitting away, as far as I know, but it's on here as in case. We'll be moving money to stabilization funds, but I don't have the free cash done with it yet, so.
Now, why are we doing it in the fall?
We just historically have always done it in the fall, haven't we?
Do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we always-
We always put money into those funds in fall, that way it's done, it's locked up, it stays, it gets taken in, it just, or-
Yeah, you're right, 'cause we post the books, they don't have the money.
And then, and then money's available in the spring, just-
Got a special town meeting, uh-
Getting old, sorry.
We had a rebel, we didn't have a rebel.
We have, no, there's some, one-time projects, we always have something, the clerk has a proposal.
Castro.
As you know, there's now early voting for elections, for state elections and for federal elections. There's something called a poll pad, which is electronic sign-in, you know, you, you come to vote, you have to sign those big register books, there's an electronic version, which some committees have used and Hull used, and Carol's very excited about trying it, so we're gonna rent one for the fall election. She'll be able to use it for town meeting, it'll rapidly, it'll greatly speed up people's ability to, to sign in out for voting.
It's just sign-in, it's not the vote.
No, it's not the vote, no, 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 it's, you know, the law-
It checks you in.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a check-in, and it'll-
Just so everybody who's watching realizes we're not going to electronic voting.
No, 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 it's not electronic voting, this is electronic check-in. It would also help a town meeting, it'll help people get their credentials a little bit more quickly. So she's gotta try it for the fall, for the early voting, and then if it works well, she's looking at, so that's a price for three of them, that's what that potential price is. So we'll know before town meeting if it's, if it's what she wants to do. Mark is also putting together a list of, you know, sub, it's, they're maintenance projects that need to get done, that are above and beyond what he would go with budget. And there's a couple of other things I haven't slotted here yet, and I'm still talking to folks about, even, small items that we can pay them, for them now, it's good to do. The most interesting one at the moment, as you know, a year and change ago, the town adopted a scenic road bylaw, where we have the first four, five nominations for streets. They've gone through the planning board process, and they've been approved, it's Atlantic-
Oh, five of them.
Yeah, Atlantic Avenue, Nichols Road, Jerusalem Road, South Main Street, and Beach Street. So I think they'll probably be structured in one article with probably independent votes on each street, unless somebody wants to, it was a block.
And are they speci, the entire streets in each case?
I'm not, you know, it's a good question, I don't know, I don't, I, I would think on Beach Street and Nichols Road, it would be the entire street. Jerusalem Road's a very long street, it could be the entire street, I, I, I don't have the planning board minutes yet, you'll have that whole packet.
Is that something we could actually hear about as soon as our next meeting?
Absolutely, so, so I would like to start setting up reviews, starting, so we're gonna be doing financial conversations on October ninth anyway, Don is gonna give us our FY eighteen closeout and our FY nineteen update, so we could probably start talking about some of these other articles that night. So you can either tee up the scenic roadways for the ninth or the twenty-third.
Okay.
The goal is to have as much of this wrapped up on the twenty-third as possible. Capital improvements, there's a water project, repairs to the Iron River Dam, waiting for, that's a bet in progress anyway, they're gonna have to move some money out of retained earnings, I don't have the exact number yet, there's a potential property purchase we've been discussing, that may be a second article, the, and then the, and then the LED streetlights will be in here, and then the community preservation committee needs to reactivate at least one[1619.08] And then the community preservation committee needs to reactivate at least one project. The Millican Field money was not fully spent. It timed out at the end of June and there's still work being done, so they need to reactivate or re- authorize the money.
Which project is that?
And then the bathrooms and store and snack shack.
So this, this just is kind of a general authorization to read.
The money was already allocated by town meeting, but it timed out.
So I'm just, you know, my feedback would be, why don't you make it more specific?
Yeah, no, no, I, I, yes. I'm trying to, it's that one project fund.
Yeah.
Then maybe one other and that's, that's all this is. I don't think there's any more allocations.
Yeah, I would just make it specific because people are gonna read this and go.
No, 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 this is.
This is very draft.
This is, I was working.
You need a draft watermark like I do.
You can hardly see, there is actually a draft watermark, it just, it wasn't very.
All right.
So we're talking about a warrant that's, I mean, by the way, the scenic roads is important and there'll be a very interesting conversation. And the financial things are always important, so hopefully it'll be a fairly timely meeting. We may have, if some of these break out, we may have eight or nine articles, but they're all fairly quick and fast moving, so.
How do revenues go so far for the town?
This year or last year?
This year, yeah.
Things are fine as far as I'm aware. Don's been really focused on wrapping up last year, but I've, I've seen nothing bad so far. I mean, it's, we don't get our excess taxes time of year. State aid is, we already know state aid went up, so those checks are coming in. Building revenue has been pretty strong, which is good.
So we talked about maybe getting a, getting an update on October ninth for just revenues and expenditures for the year.
Alcohol line because you have three alcohol hearings, but a new license.
Oh, we're servicing fans.
Under, under here.
You have a, a brand new license application for the old Blue Muscle property that's gonna be scheduled as a new restaurant, a proposed Asian fusion restaurant.
Where is it?
The old Blue Muscle, Blue Muscle site up on three.
Fusion.
Cocoa.
All that's old is new.
Yeah, I don't remember the name of it.
Like every running book in the dining room?
There's a, there's a proposed. The, the village liquor, remember the license that was?
Saint John.
Yeah, Saint John property, that's coming back for, on a remand for the board to consider. The board rejected the relocation, but then formally reject their renewal. So after a very convoluted couple of years, the A B C C has said the board has to reconsider, formally have a hearing on the renewal.
We did reject it.
You rejected.
Based upon the lack of a suitable.
That wasn't, it wasn't apparently a formally noticed hearing. I, I, look, I, I, I've had Jim, Jim Lampkin just told me, don't try to understand it, Chris, just, just go with it and try to make it progress. So he's working up a memo and then proposed findings of fact for a grant and a rejection. If we can do an executive session in advance because there's litigation, we'll see if we can do that. I'm just letting you know that that's coming up.
But I just ask the board to consider starting that meeting at six. I mean, work that is gonna be a very, very big meeting, so we, on October ninth. I'm sorry, I know, I mean, I have an hour and a half commute and I cannot leave work before four thirty, but I don't know.
Six thirty if you can do six thirty.
I just think, I think the hearings are gonna be at least an hour and a half. We have, you know, issues on the town meeting warrant, you know, there's a whole bunch of.
Hopefully the license hearing will be fairly painless.
That'll be quick.
Yeah, that'll be quick. The sage and could be fairly compact.
Yeah.
We'll get, we'll have that straight. And then there's a proposed change of manager, the class of our rent for the license manager.
That may not be so compact.
Yeah, I, I, I know. So those are the three that are scheduled for October ninth. So that's, that's what we're starting.
Okay, let's move on to select my comment. Chris, Steve?
Bringing, bringing that up, I have to say, we've got three hearings in one night and then you expect us to do town business as well. I think it's time to start thinking about whether or not we need to move the hearings to their, to their own specific timing. You know, you've got, we've got considerations with respect to licensing that could involve, might involve litigation. Certainly have been troubling in one element for a consistent period of time and I'm sure the board has some deliberative thoughts on that. We're entering into budget season and getting ready, getting ready for special town meeting. I don't think that we will operate at peak efficiency if we're trying to jam all of this stuff into a single night. That's all. Secondly, I, I don't know if anybody else got this letter.
Nope.
I shall read it. To Steve Gomorokohasset Selectman from Mary Sullivan, one eighty Forest Avenue. And I, anytime someone sends me something in a stamped envelope, I'm very impressed. Mary Sullivan writes, I am writing as I have an issue with the D P W. I have been requesting since August that the gutters and sidewalks on Forest Avenue be weed whacked, especially from above one thirty to past one eighty Forest Avenue. I have called the D P W myself. I was told that a summer work would be sent, nothing happened. I've stopped by town hall three times and have spoken to the secretary who in turn called the D P W. Each time a promised action would be taken, nothing happened. I would weed whack myself, but I don't have a gas machine and I'm too old. Okay, fair enough, I buy that.
We have that.
The sidewalks were a wonderful improvement and are heavily used. Now they're a mess with all the weeds growing taller every day and disturbing the walkway. I'd like to be proud of Forest Avenue as part of, in quotes, scenic Cohasset. Please help me out with this issue. So by way of public reading, I'm asking that attention be brought to it again on the, on behalf of Ms. Sullivan. As I said, anybody who takes the time to stamp an envelope and send it around is good for her.
Could I just?
By the way, I, I don't mean to, in reading this, cast aspersions on anybody here in town. I just read verbatim what's been requested.
Thank you. Could I just add to that, which is there's another property far up on Forest Ave, but along the sidewalk closer to the lights on North Main Street where the, the people, I think they put in a gravel driveway and they dug up the actual sidewalk portion. There was a resident who brought that to my attention in an email and I, I just think it's probably worth, I mean, there was a lot of money and a lot of time making those sidewalks and they are utilized and it's one of the busiest streets in town. But people are supposed to return sidewalks or any public way to their, their place.
It's not your party driveway.
So I think maybe holistically, we need to look at what's going on in the Forest Ave sidewalk and make sure that we're, you know, taking care of our assets and letting people know what their responsibilities are.
Inversely, it's not inversely.
Right, exactly. Is that it, Steve?
That, that's it, thank you.
Jack, any?
I'm good, thank you.
Paul?
I just want to mention that National Grid is down on Sawyer Street by the Music Circus, replacing a gas line. That has been chronically a slow leak, which every time I walk my dog, you can smell it. They fix that. There's others in town, as you're walking around, you're gonna wanna mention the National Grid. It reached a level of importance according to how they feel how much gas is leaking, so. But I was delighted to see them fixing a portion of the pipe that was the weekend after what happened in Lawrence.
That's it.
I'm fine.
Chris, do you have, do we need to, is there anything with the FEMA flood maps that we need to know about?
I, I don't think so. Brian has the whole packet and everything.
Okay.
If there's something I want to know.
Okay. I'm actually looking through my emails.
So I just want to mention the, the North Carolina State Management, Emergency Management System use the FEMA flood maps for pre-positioning of boats and preserving their equipment for rescue and search and rescue. And they were quite accurate, so this is kind of interesting.
Just following up on Lawrence, I'm sorry, I've got to mention this. So we did have two, a police officer and the Harrison Schmidt and our assistant fire chief, John Dockery, were up in Lawrence, both on separate teams, in the, in the area, I should say. A police emergency response team and a fire emergency response team helping support the, after the disaster last week. So we did have people up in the field and our force, and our both police and fire were available for further, you know, there's like a swinging backup as people move further north, you kind of cover others, so that didn't have to happen.
Anything you can share publicly about why it happened?
I don't know anything more. I mean, I know more than, know more than you first.
There's a, there is a news alert that came up with respect to it. I haven't read it.
I, it, it, it was frightening and, and, you know. So, but I'm glad that we, 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 it's great that we have some folks who've been able to just maybe help out on a regional basis. So I, again, I'm sure there'll be more conversations now about community groups helping to help out the folks in the Carolinas who are really home by this.
It's all the more reason why we should be making noise about our power grid outage continuing to go out because, you know, there's, there was warning in this, this incident in the North Shore, you know, that had happened before. There's warning signs and so forth. We're certainly getting warning signs in our community with these constant power outages, so we need to continue to keep the pressure on National Grid wherever we can to upgrade our, our power lines and our power supplies because, you know, they're clearly substandard based on the experience that I've seen in the last few years. I had another citizen who grabbed me last night and went on about it. What their solution is gonna be is they have a ninety, ninety-three year old relative that lives by themselves in Cohasset. They're gonna buy a generator and, you know, and I said to him, you know, people shouldn't have to go out and spend generators in order to try to survive these storms, so.
Usage fees.
So, you know, we don't want to have an incident like they had in Lowell here.